Slide, slide please. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide you all with a brief overview from our July 13th, 2020 study session presentation. Also to talk a little bit about what the holistic approach to homelessness is, which would include outreach, education, resources, and enforcement. We'll also be presenting to you the idea behind a couple of new positions for 2021, and then what those budget impacts would be in 2021. So in July, on July 13th, we had a group of folks that came to city council to talk about homelessness and the various initiatives in the county. And this is a slide from that presentation. That was part of Paulo Diaz, who is the Community Safety and Well-Being Manager for Adams County. And they talked about the idea of prevention, housing, services, navigating resources, and the idea of permanent housing. I just wanted to revisit some of those initiatives to maybe remind you of some of the issues we talked about back in July. If you want to move ahead. Dylan, please. Part of the outreach and resources involve items such as the Adams County Pocket Directory. And I've provided you here, what Adams County has created is this pocket directory. And it clips onto a keychain. There's actually a little carabiner that comes with it, so someone could clip it onto their backpack. But this is a type of a resource that we can have to use in the field. And on each one of these cards, and they're laminated, you know, they're laminated so that I'm going to call them somewhat weatherproof. But it provides people with information on shelters, with severe weather shelter information, food, health services, general services, and emergency services. Similarly, we're working on trying to put together a Commerce City Parks Recreation Golf Park Rules Pocket Guide that will accompany this. That we think it's important for folks that are in our inner city, that they know what the park trails and open space rules are. So I'm here really to talk about the holistic approach to homelessness. And what that means is it takes involvement from our community, our organization, the county, our metro partners, there's some state opportunities. I mean, and it has started with the county, since we don't have a program established within our organization. But we have the Adams County Community Safety and Well-Being Division at the county, and they focus and highlight the Adams County Coalition for the Homeless. And there have been a number of groups that participate and work on the issue related to homelessness. And I think one of the first things I want to say is, we will never eliminate homelessness. There are always going to be folks that are coming to our community that either need assistance, or they may be passing through, or there could be a variety of issues involved with the story behind their homelessness. But we have the Commerce City Emergency Manager, who is Kirk Dominick in the Police Department, that works on some of our homelessness issues. Our park maintenance folks end up working on homelessness issues simply because they're in the field. Our Strategic Initiative Supervisor in Parks Recreation Golf will begin to work on more of the homelessness issues. And then we're proposing a new Community Navigator, a homeless outreach, a full-time position that would report in Parks Recreation and Golf, and would actually report to the Strategic Initiative Supervisor. We also work collectively with Access Housing, that as you may recall, that nonprofit has been supporting Commerce City families since 1983. And at that time, we had the Executive Director participate in the presentation, Megan Benzina. Unfortunately, Megan has left Access Housing, so they're searching for a new Executive Director. We talked about the idea of maybe trying to do some collaborative partnerships with Access Housing around the Community Navigator position, and at this time, that isn't a possibility for us. We also would work with and are working with other metro area nonprofits and resources. And then most recently, we have looked at providing a park ranger for Commerce City through the Adams County Open Space. And Adams County Open Space recently started a park ranger program. They've hired a park ranger supervisor and one park ranger, and have, are looking to some of the municipalities, especially those of us that have the Sand Creek and Platte River coming through their communities. So what we were looking at doing is providing, we enter into an IGA with Adams County Open Space, and they would actually have the park ranger as an Adams County Open Space employee that would be designated to the river corridors, trails, and parks in Commerce City. We would be a part of hiring that park ranger. We would also have to make a contribution that would cover the salary and other expenses of the park ranger. At this point, what we have done as a staff, we submitted a grant proposal to GOCO for a Resilient Community Grant. And we were very hopeful and have been led to believe we had a great application. And we were hopeful that we'd be able to fund the park ranger. Unfortunately, they had 48 applications, 21 of those 48 were funded. Those 21, 18 were funded completely, and three were funded partially. We have been encouraged to come back for the next round of resilient community grants, and staff is willing to work with us and help us tweak that grant. They think we can be competitive, but of course, there are no guarantees. And that cycle happens again in February of 2021. So if you would please, Dylan, go ahead and move to the next slide. So the Community Navigator, the Navigator for Homeless Outreach, it's an individual that would collaborate with our city departments, external organizations, and our residents to coordinate homeless navigation efforts for individuals and families in needs of services and support. And they'd also help distribute materials and resources. I think the biggest thing about the navigator is, I'm not an expert in this area. We don't have any experts on our staff, and it's difficult. There are a lot of resources, but it's difficult to coordinate all of those. So we would be looking to the Community Navigator position to really help us set up our holistic approach to homelessness in Commerce City. We're looking at a total cost just for the position to include benefits at $93,368. And I'd like to explain that that doesn't mean that this, when we budget for positions, we have to budget at the high end of the range. So $93,000 is the maximum in the range for this particular position. It's not the salary, but we do have to budget that way. The funding source that we're looking at, in 2021 and 2022, we're looking at, for the salary, a general fund contribution of just under $64,000. But we're also looking to use a contribution from our Healthy Places Grant for years 2021 and 2022 towards this salary. And the reason for that is one of the, one of the big objectives within our Healthy Places Grant was the idea of improving safety in our parks. And this is one approach to helping us begin to do that. If you can move to the next slide, Dylan. Another part of the holistic approach involves education. And so the Parks Recreation and Golf staff right now, we're in the process of updating all of our parks, trails, and open space rules and regulations, including the relative municipal code items with our city attorney. We won't be able to finish that up until the first quarter of 2021 because of other priorities and just simply the capacity in the city attorney's office. But once we have all of those pieces worked out, what we'll be working on will be our park signage updates. Some of that, we may begin here in 2020 and into 2021. It's also a project we're going to have to work on our funding for. But we'd be looking at our general park rules, playgrounds, and Veterans Memorial. The picture I'm showing you here, this is actually an existing, a current existing encampment along the Sand Creek Regional Greenway. During COVID, we have been asked not to, by the CDC, or by the CDC, the State Health Department and Tri-County, not to move these folks unless they're creating some extreme challenges. And for us right now, having them on the Sand Creek is not creating a problem. It would probably create a greater risk because of COVID to try to be moving those encampments. But we are going to have to manage those encampments. And the Sand Creek Regional Greenway would be, we would work on managing and helping these folks with resources and honestly, moving these encampments eventually. But that would be part of the responsibility of a park ranger. And the reason we're looking to collaborate with Adams County Open Space, we can't afford or don't have, I'm going to say, we don't have the resources to create an entire park ranger team. However, if we have the team through Adams County Open Space, you never want to send a person into these encampments by themselves. So if we need help on the Sand Creek, the Adams County Designated Rangers would go with our park ranger to help on the Sand Creek and Platte within our city boundaries. And likewise, if the park rangers in Adams County needed help in the unincorporated areas, our rangers would be the backup. So by collaborating, while we're paying for one resource, we're really getting the support of three or four. If you want to go ahead and move forward, Dylan. Veterans Memorial, I know that a number of you, this has been a sensitive topic. This is the signage that we've currently placed at Veterans Memorial. I'm also showing you a picture, that it's my goal that this never happens again. These are items that were abandoned. We did remove those. We do have guidelines for doing that. Quite frankly, you know, staff would welcome anyone and everyone if they're willing to follow our park rules and regulations and be respectful of other people, and quite frankly, of our city-owned amenities. It's not uncommon to have these types of things left or graffiti placed on our buildings. So our intent is to update, put some additional signage, and then follow up with that. Can you move forward, Dylan? So outreach and enforcement. It really is a combination of outreach and enforcement. We want to help people that are looking for resources and try to connect them. We want to also try to connect folks that might need mental health resources. We're hoping that we can have a combination of outreach, but there also has to be, unfortunately, that enforcement part. Because if we don't enforce the rules and regulations in a respectful way, then we're going to end up with what you've seen in some of my previous pictures. But the Police Department will help us with outreach. Our intent would be to provide them with the Pocket Resource Guides, other resources that folks could be referred to. The park ranger, as I mentioned, really a focus on trails, but available in our open space and city-owned parks. We've also started looking into a third-party provider. Front Range Patrol is one, something we might look at using as a supplement to our existing resources next spring. At Eagle Point, where we will be upgrading the exterior security cameras that cover the parking lot, Veterans Memorial, the play structure and shelters, it also will extend to the city vans area that we have secured on the property. I say it's unfunded, but we've actually managed to find the funds to make that project happen. When we renovated Veterans Memorial Park, we enhanced all of the lighting in the park. We've also, we're trying to look at Eagle Point and Veterans Memorial as a complete site, and look at how do we keep, I'm just going to say minimizing the attractive nuisances for folks. We went in just recently and installed some additional front door enclosures. We had a little, an enclosure that did not, wasn't completely enclosed with doors from the remodel. And unfortunately, we had people spending the night in there and doing a lot of different things. And now that that's our front entrance and only entrance, we want to make sure that that's welcoming and clean and ready for users. So installing that front door has been extremely helpful. The surveillance trailer, I believe, is something that PD will talk to you all. It is something that's just being tested. We do not own one. I know that it was at Veterans Memorial Park over the past weekend, and at Pioneer Park the week before. So there's a lot of different things that we are trying as an organization to work at our homelessness issues. Dylan, if you could go ahead and move forward, please. The severe weather activation plan is another resource that our city has the opportunity to participate. It's a partnership with Adams County, Access Housing, Almost Home, and also Bayard Enterprises. And what this program provides is when there's severe weather, it provides vouchers for hotels and transportation for folks to get to those hotels. It's not completely worked out. Personally, I think there's some gaps in how we share the resource and actually get the folks transported to those hotels that the vouchers are good for. But that is something that we have an opportunity to participate and be a part of and provide as another resource for some of the homelessness folks in our community. Dylan, if you can please move forward. So what are some of the recommendations from staff? That we continue to work collaboratively with Adams County nonprofits such as Access Housing and Almost Home, as well as all of the other city departments. Also want to look at developing a community awareness program for both our staff and residents. It's uncomfortable as a staff person working at Eagle Point, or any staff that isn't trained for when they come upon our homeless population. So we want to work on that from the staff perspective, and also maybe help eliminate some of the myth with our residents. Not all homeless people pose a threat. And we really just want to try to help everyone have a better understanding of homelessness and how we can help each other. And then also look at supporting new positions, such as the Community Navigator. I can share with you that this is a position that is now being supported by communities throughout the metro area, Westminster, Thornton, Arvada, Edgewater, Golden, Lakewood, Wheatridge, and Northland, hopefully Commerce City. And then the park ranger with Adams County Open Space. So Dylan, if you want to move to my final slide, which is the budget impacts. This is where it becomes difficult. We have not budgeted any funds in 2021 for any programs related to homelessness in Commerce City. So when you look at the Community Navigator position, as I mentioned, we're looking for years 21 and 22 to make a Healthy Places Grant contribution to that program of $30,000 annually. However, that leaves us with an $89,868, approximately $90,000 contribution from the general fund, should council be interested in moving forward with this program. The park ranger, as I mentioned, was not supported or funded by the GOCO Resilient Community Grant. Here in November, there's a possibility we could receive some funding in February, but we have no idea what that might look like. To fund the park ranger program in the first year, we're looking at a total of about $109,000, which also includes some one-time purchases, such as a contribution towards a vehicle. And then the severe weather activation plan, we have been approached, or I have been approached by Adams County about Commerce City making an annual contribution towards this program. Paulo Diaz is working currently on an IGA. And if council is interested in pursuing this program, an IGA that would be brought to council, my understanding is, he's already been talking with Thornton, Westminster, and some other communities. I've said an annual contribution of up to $10,000. I would suggest maybe half of that until we have a better idea of how many people are we actually reaching in Commerce City. Because, you know, Thornton and Westminster are communities that are a lot larger than Commerce City. And so that would just be my initial thoughts on budget impact. And my final slide is just a slide that says, questions from city council. So with that, Honorable Mayor, I would engage any questions that you or the rest of council may have.
Does anyone on council have any questions for Ms. Keith, Councilmember Hearst?
Well, thanks for the presentation today. I think this is a very good subject for us to be addressing right now. Obviously, there is a perceived issue with this, maybe not just perceived, but an actual issue with homelessness in our city. And a couple of questions that I would have is, first of all, you know, I hear about contribution to a vehicle. Obviously, we have to do something like that if we were going to move forward. But we also funded electric bikes last year for the Police Department on Sand Creek because one of the issues was enforcement on Sand Creek becomes very tough in a vehicle, and you need foot access. I don't know if we want to, you know, use anything but an electric bike, but, you know, a segue, you know, the segues, maybe everybody at the Police Department would hate me for suggesting that. But, you know, just, just want to think outside the box as well. You know, obviously, that person wouldn't spend 100% of their time on the Sand Creek corridor for enforcement purposes, but we were going to have to get creative in terms of how they're going to do enforcement on Sand Creek because the trail access and all that is not conducive to vehicle traffic. So that's not an extreme cost. I'm not making any suggestion of that, but it might be something we need to fund if we move forward with this. But the one, you know, sticking point for me, that's not new, I brought this up, by now, it's probably a couple of months ago. But Denver City Council just approved $20 million for a new homeless facility on 56th, I think it was 52nd Avenue, right across Sand Creek from, you know, a lot of our businesses in the area. And if we don't get in front of that, and we don't put funding towards, you know, addressing this issue, the issue is only going to, you know, increase. And that's where I was, you know, last time I talked about this, was disappointed in Denver City Council's actions without taking a regional approach. Very much think that when you invest $20 million for 10 years into a property that is, you know, I can hit a golf ball across the creek from there, you absolutely should be working closely with your neighboring community. And so it, they are, they are trying to address their issue, but in doing so, could be creating an issue for us that we have not set aside funding for, as was addressed in this presentation. And so one request that I would have is if we continue to move forward, is that we need to reach out to Denver and try to find a way to work with them for a regional approach. Obviously, internally with Adams County, we're looking at this as a regional approach. We are looking at the park ranger system as having Westminster, Thornton, and all the other communities in Adams County involved. But without Denver in this conversation, I really think we are missing a huge chunk of this. And so $20 million is no cheap project that they put forward. So the ancillary costs that come with that, some of those have been shifted to us. Yes, there's a creek in between that location and, you know, our boundary for our city, but that's not going to stop the enforcement needs on that Sand Creek corridor. And so I actually think this is a good idea to get in front and find a way, be creative, have something that doesn't necessarily strain our Police Department to continue to, you know, respond to calls in this area. They will need to, and they will need to back up any park ranger. But can we have educational opportunities, a day-to-day relationship with those that are staying long-term here? Look to provide training to that park ranger so we can get them real-time help as needed, the homeless population, I mean. I think that's a good starting point for us, you know. When we get out of this pandemic, we're going to have issues like this to continue to address for a long time coming. This pandemic has significantly negatively affected many people. And so we will have, unfortunately, it will cause more homelessness and people looking for answers and help. And so we need to get in front of it. I hear the presentation loud and clear that we haven't allocated any money towards this. I don't think we, in my position, maybe not everybody agrees that this is the best answer or approach, I don't know. But from my situation, we can't do nothing. If we don't get in front of this problem, we're going to spend a lot more money coming behind it and trying to clean up the problem. And so I'd love to hear everybody else's opinion on this direction. I support it moving forward because I think this is a good regional plan, at least from Adams County, to begin to address the issue. And that will, I think, educate us on what we can do next, once those issues, once we kind of lay a baseline for the issue and opportunities to help and resolve some of this. And I also agree that we may not ever solve this problem, but I am of the feeling that we can definitely make it better.
Councilman Hearst, I would just like to comment. Thank you for bringing it up. It is important, in both the park ranger position and community navigator, it is important to develop relationships. And Kirk Dominick from the Police Department has had the most experience with this, but it's a very small piece of what he does, and he doesn't have that dedicated time or capacity to do that. And these positions and the knowledge he has, and then the support. And when I say our metro area partners, that would include Denver. But that, Kirk has said that relationship, when people are more willing to listen and be more cooperative. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
No, thanks for, thanks for calling out that we already have someone doing that. I think that's fantastic, but he obviously has an expanded role beyond this. And so that creates tough situations. And, you know, I don't want to make an assumption, but we could consider what uniform they wear as well. And, you know, the unfortunate topic is, if I'm a drug user and I'm homeless, the last person I want to talk to is a cop, you know, because I'm worried about getting in trouble possibly. So, you know, that's, and I'm not saying anything bad about cops in that situation. They're doing their job. But, but if we're really trying to create a relationship and help people move forward, to me, we have to, we have to have a mindset going into it of what might work and try everything. I mean, that's not, it's not to say that this one's going to be a home run if we, if we, not necessarily strike out, but if this doesn't produce the results that we want to see, or we think we can do better, we have to be open-minded. This is our first real go at allocating funding if we move forward to this, this problem. And so we have to be adjusted, be willing to adjust and make the appropriate moves to support this program moving forward if we decide that this is the right direction.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Keith regarding the subject?
Yes, thank you, Carolyn. That was really a great presentation, very well fleshed out. So I appreciate that. I think that, as was said, there's, we have no choice but to do it. And there's another aspect to this, which is... And there's another aspect to this, which is by December thirty-first, thirty to forty million people will be evicted potentially because the eviction ends, the eviction moratorium ends on December thirty-first. So we're going to have other types of homeless people, homeless families and so forth, that may be on our streets also, is something to consider. I'm glad that this is going to be a regional effort that is highly critical because I don't want the navigator navigating people right out of Commerce City into Westminster, nor do I want Westminster doing it to us, or North Glenn, or Thornton, or unincorporated Adams County, or Denver for that matter. We all need to be working on this together, especially with what's happening. I hope though, that by, I, I will support this right now, but I would, I really hope that by 2022, or the next budget, we can have a human services navigator, or human services officer, so that we can look at this in a holistic manner, that it's not simply homelessness, but it's all of the human services needs that are required, particularly since we lost human services in Commerce City when Adams County, well, we didn't lose it, but Adams County moved their facility to one hundred and twentieth and Pecos. So we need someone here who can help people with all of the problems that are, that are coming forward and coming out of the pandemic and so forth. So thank you for this, Carolyn. I think this is going to be really great. And my question though is, if we didn't budget for the money, where is the money going to come from? What will we be doing if we say yes?
So if council's supportive finances, working on an ordinance that would ask for council's support for the funding out of general fund, fund balance, or reserve, and I'm not really, it would be general fund somewhere. And that would be brought to council December seventh on first reading, come back for second reading on January fourth. But in that month of December, we would go ahead and start recruiting so that we could have a navigator onboard in January and, and start moving forward. Hopefully to have the plan in place, a solid working plan by the, I'm just going to say the end of the first quarter of 2021. But it would be a general fund reappropriation that council would have to approve.
Thank you.
Carolyn, I have a question. Thank you for the presentation. Where is this individual going to be housed from? I know we talked about not having them housed at the rec center. Do we know more of where we think they'll be housed from?
So the navigator, I actually think, Jose, in the beginning, we would have their office time, probably out of Bison Ridge, just because we have some space there. But, you know, probably at least half of their time is going to be out in the field. But in the beginning, we really need to have someone help us get our program set up really solid. And they'll be part of a larger group of folks, you know, various communities in Adams County that meet regularly, so they can help get us connected with resources and hopefully there's grants. And then we have another staff person that can help, you know, apply for those grants. I don't see, I don't see them doing client visits, like bringing anybody into the office at this point. Certainly at some point, if we move to the idea of a human services navigator, then that might be a different story. And maybe that all fits together with housing and just a whole lot of other things within the city. So I would say the office time, just because of space available, we might give them a place to call home, that they can just leave their things and do paperwork at Bison Ridge, and then have them, you know, out in the community. And we're looking at with that position, using one of our existing vehicles, not asking for any such as that.
Thank you. And, and yeah, I would echo, I think this is a good start. I think we need to do more. This, you know, we're dealing with the pandemic and the homeless pandemic has been here for many, many years, and it's going to continue to get worse. So I would completely support this for the start. Thank you.
Councilmember Madera.
I just wanted to voice my support, and I agree with, with the council members before me has said as well. That's a problem that we need to address, and it's only growing the more that we don't do anything about it. So, you know, I think it's a good start to a path towards a solution.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Carolyn, for the presentation. I also just want to voice my support for the position. I think it's a really important time to have someone in this role and excited to see us move forward with it. I just wanted to ask one question. I know you've got a kind of a tentative plan for office space at this point, but with the South Platte property, I wonder if down the road there's potential for kind of a partnership with the nonprofits in the human services world to place this person in that area. So just kind of more feedback. I don't, don't know if I, there's not really an answer, I guess, just kind of feedback and something that was on my mind.
And I certainly think that's a long-term possibility, you know, depending on what happens with that floor that I understand council's moving forward, we're moving forward with. So there's lots of future possibilities.
Absolutely. Thanks, Carolyn.
Councilmember Smith.
Carolyn, thank you for the presentation. For the Ranger grant that we weren't approved for, or that you weren't approved for, did you get feedback on why you weren't approved for it?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
For the grant that you applied for, did you get any feedback on why you didn't get it?
We have a meeting next week. This all just happened this past, last Thursday. Yeah, that was just this past Thursday. Sorry, my days are blending together. So the grants were just announced last Thursday. So we have a meeting next week after the holiday. And then the gentleman said he had some, you know, some tweaks for us and that he thought we can be competitive, but it's not a guarantee, which is why I went ahead and threw that park ranger number out there. And what I would tell council, we'll continue to look for any kind of grants we can to support any of our operating or staffing costs, however we can do that.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yeah, and then can we, I don't want to get myself in trouble, trying to rethink how to say it. I think, you know, I, I think that, I guess I would love to see, and I'm not, and this might not be on the city. This is really just, this could even be on us council members. We need to have some kind of regional task force of elected members, of elected officials that, that are addressing this issue from, like, like the title of this presentation, from a holistic view. And if we really want to take a regional approach, we can't be secretive about this. Obviously, this isn't secretive, but we need to have a, a meeting among elected officials on how we address this, how we, you know, fairly fund this from a regional perspective. Obviously, all of us are scrapped for, for money towards our police departments to make sure that they can provide the enforcement that we all expect. We heard, we heard the chief last week detail, you know, some of the challenges, not, not only legislative, but financially, and then the fact that hiring police officers is not an easy task these days. And so, you know, I really think this time in, in the Denver metro area for, for elected officials to sit down and try to start looking for solutions. But in that same conversation, again, just feedback, not necessarily question, but hopefully if with this, if this position moves forward, we can find a way where we can get, I know one of the parts of the presentation was educating our community maybe about some of the falsehoods or some of those things that scare folks about homeless people. But, but we need a, we need an opportunity for them to provide feedback. And then just like we have in every other situation, if your sign's knocked over or whatever, to be able to call out, you know, certain issues that they see, and then for us to respond and address either why we did or how we did something, or why we weren't able to do something. And I think that's where some of the frustration starts, is people report issues. And I'm not blaming this on the city at all. This is a general observation for me. But I think some of the issues is they don't understand, people don't understand the challenges that our law enforcement and our city officials have when addressing some of these. You know, what are the laws that prohibit us from doing certain, taking certain actions? What are the laws that allow us to take certain actions? And so, and, and quite honestly, in the Sand Creek area, what are the boundary lines? Like, whose jurisdiction is that? And that becomes a blur at sometimes for some people. And so, you know, I, I really support the educational side. I want to see some real good, and they're going to, they're tough conversations to have, especially when you're not on the same kind of team because you're on a different city council. But it's necessary. We have to address this. The state has to be involved as well because they also have on two seventy right away that, that they have a part in this as well. And so across, across the board from our region, we have to, to have those tough conversations, but we have to also include our community and all of our, the members, the members of our community that this may potentially affect every day, residents and business owners alike, should have a say in what they feel could be solutions. And as we said, maybe not permanent solutions, but things that can work towards making this issue better. And so just, just some thoughts that I wanted to pass on because I think this is a much bigger issue than Commerce City can tackle. We, we have to really continue to build on the regional approach.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Keith? Seeing none, would like to thank you for coming and giving us this update this evening. I look forward to the ordinance allowing us to reappropriate some funds out of the general fund in order to fund these positions. Especially excited about the Park Ranger position. I think that that is a great thing that members in our community have been clamoring for and wanting their parks to be safe and knowing that they can take their families and have a pleasant experience there without having to contend with some of the challenges that we've had at some of our parks. So I appreciate your ingenuity in coming up with a solution to that and look forward to supporting that. It was a formal vote in the near future. Next on the agenda is a presentation on the Adams County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Will Chief of Police Clint Nichols please give the presentation?
Mayor, city council members, thank you. Glad to be with you this evening. Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Kirk Dominic, and I believe the, the vendor that put together the plan is also available. So Kirk, if you are ready, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and state council members. Scott from Wood Environmental was not available tonight to do the review. So I'm going to do a quick review of the Adams County mitigation plan. And what I'd like to do is start with just a little history and hopefully give you guys some good understanding what the purpose of a hazard mitigation plan is all about. This process, it's a long process. It started back in August of 2018. Adams County received a grant with a seventy-five, twenty-five percent match, sixty thousand dollar grant. And the next step of that process was to put out RFPs for consultant to do and develop the hazard mitigation plan for Adams County. And that, in September of 2019, that was awarded to Wood Environmental. And I believe you met Scott Fields last week. It's the council meeting where he spoke briefly. And he's an expert in hazard mitigation plans. He's been doing it for years. And he put out a really good product. And just to, just to review, the, the plan that they developed was approved by FEMA, was approved by our state, and was approved by Adams County Board of Commissioners. So it's an approved plan. Back in, the other, the other thing about the hazard mitigation plan, the purpose, and this is the main thing I really would like city council to understand and take home as a takeaway point. Hazard mitigation plans has to be updated. You have to have a valid one. They're good for five years. Adams County, last one they had was in 2014, so they needed to start the process, and now they have an approved plan. What does an approved plan do for you? It basically lets you have the opportunity to apply for FEMA and federal grants for mitigation projects. That's the main point. If you don't have an approved plan, then you don't even have the, you can't even get your foot in through the door. You're, you can't even apply for grants or mitigation grants. So that's the, probably the number one purpose and number one thing to take away from, for tonight as we speak, is an approved, you need an approved plan to be eligible to apply for, for mitigation projects using grant funding. So with that being said, when, when I heard back in 2018 that Adams County was updating their plan, I, I asked, requested with the Adams County OEM if we could piggyback with them. They're paying the bill, which was a benefit, save the city money. And they graciously said, yes, you could piggyback since we're part of Adams County, and we can take advantage of, of their hazard mitigation plan. And by doing that, and by having an approved hazard mitigation plan, that means now, once our city council, hopefully on December seventh approves it, approves the resolution, then that means starting in January, we will be able to start applying for hazard mitigation grants, with some are becoming, becoming available in January. And by that, then we will be in the competition of hopefully competing for funds with other jurisdictions for projects that we'd like to do in our city. Now, if you look in part of the plan, it's over five hundred pages. It's pretty extensive. And part of it, our annex C is Commerce City, and in there we have, we identified three projects. Now, an important point to understand about this is that it's a living document. That means if a project comes up six months from now, two years from now, three years from now, as long as we have an approved plan, we can apply for that grant, okay? You don't have to list everything in our annex C in Commerce City or, or the base plan to, to, that you want to apply for, for the next five years. It's a living document. So that's the important thing. So we have an approved FEMA plan, approved by the state. It would be my highly recommendation to, on December seventh, that you guys approve and ratify through the resolution process our plan, the Adams County plan, which then come in January, we will be able to be eligible to apply for grants to work on any type of hazard mitigation projects that we want to do within our city. So I just wanted to really emphasize and try to clear up any misunderstanding what the purpose of the hazard mitigation plan is, and so on. So if there's any other questions, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to take on any questions.
Councilmember Noble.
Thank you very much. I had really hoped that the environmental expert could be here tonight. One of the things that I asked for during the draft oil and gas regulation discussion is that we have a full discussion of hazards in Commerce City. So I fully support a hazard mitigation plan and its purpose and what it will be used for. The problem is, is that we actually need to have a conversation about these hazards. I'd like to point out, for example, that the hazard mitigation plan considers earthquakes a low priority, which is in fact incorrect. And so.
You muted yourself.
You muted yourself.
Sorry, I saw Councilmember Hearst shaking his head, so. Let me see here. I have to take my hand off, off the mute for. Okay, this is Colorado's earthquake and fault map. You'll recall that there was a big spate of earthquakes in the sixties in particular. I mentioned at our last meeting that there was a million dollars in damage to North Denver and also in the northern Commerce City and in the Commerce City region.
You're muted again.
All right. They're up as high as five point three earthquakes. Here is Commerce City, of course, right in this area. And what does that mean for us in the hazard mitigation plan if it considers earthquakes to be a low priority? This was, of course. It occurred with the arsenal. And the injection well. That was the cause. The, however. We're looking at the same kind of process, similar process. With injecting through hydro fracking if we have. Drilling in this area. So I'm just not sure what to make of all of this when I don't think that the hazard mitigation plan reflects Commerce City. Including the super fund sites, et cetera.
Councilwoman Noble, let me just maybe. I'll do my best to try to explain. We've identified it out of county. They've identified earthquakes as being one of, one of the hazards that is a possibility to hit our area. Now, it's on the list with, along with hazardous materials flood, winter weather, thunderstorms, tornadoes, lightning, terrorism, cyber incidents, drought, earthquakes. Wildfires, dam and plane crash. So there's quite a big list of potential hazards that our community, our, our county could face. It's on the list. That's the important aspect. Now, if there's projects that you see that you would like to. Do medication wise for because of oil and gas that might be affected by earthquakes. Having an approved plan, that means we'll be eligible for funding. And that's, that's probably the main point of this plan right now is to get it ratified and get it approved through, through the resolution on December seventh. And then we can have further discussion later in probably more detail to meet your needs or your concerns. With oil and gas and earthquakes and potential hazards in, in that area.
Well, it's also all, all of the toxic situation here with our water and. So forth and super bus sites. So what I would like to say is that on the summary that we were sent. It showed priorities, high, medium and low. And that earthquakes fell into the low category homelessness fell into the high category, for example. So those three categories are meaningless, you're, you're saying.
No, it's based on occurrences. And we have, for an example. Our, one, one of the things that we identified and I was part of that committee hazardous materials. It's probably one of our significant. Highest threats within our community. Because of the industry that we have here, the transportation, what's going up and down our highways. And so it's the potential of the occurrence that might happen, the effect of if an incident does happen. So. We are more likely to have a hazardous incident, incident. A hazardous materials incident within our city than an earthquake. And that's through, through, and that's how we start going through all the rankings of the different. Hazards. For an example, floods, we, we always have a couple of severe thunderstorms and floods. Flooding events, blizzards, severe weather, winter for blizzards. I've been here for about eight years now. We've had probably five blizzards that really shut down the city. But yet in the eight years that I've been here, we haven't had an earthquake. So we, we rate it by the possibility and the likelihood of what it might happen. Hopefully that makes a little more sense. It, just because we rated it. As insignificant or low doesn't mean that it is, is not important. It's on the list and we can't address it, but that's, that's kind of the process and the mythology that we went through. When we were ranking all the different types of hazards that we, we could face within our city.
I appreciate that. However, I'd like to point out that there were a thousand earthquakes. A thousand earthquakes occurred in this area in the sixties. So just because it hasn't happened is because they stopped doing. What they were doing to cause the problem. So I just want to make certain that that, that that is addressed. You're right. It hasn't happened in. The time I've lived here either, and it hasn't happened other than in that period, but that's because. That process stopped, but it might start, something similar might start up here. And that was my concern is that we weren't addressing it. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Councilmember Hurst.
Councilwoman Noble, I apologize for shaking my head. I think, I think we're going down a path that has been addressed by international building code, nineteen sixties international building code. Did not address the, the appropriate way to build a house to, to worry about earthquakes. Also injection. Injection drilling is not, injection wells are not going to be approved in Commerce City. That is not the process that's being looked to be approved. Injection wells. Are found in some parts of Colorado, but no parts of where we are talking about. So. I understand we are going to be drilling if, you know, if that happens, we'd be drilling thousands of feet underground and that always creates possibility for seismic activity. But I lived in Nevada where we had sixty thousand earthquakes in one year and felt zero. And so they can, you know, international building code can absolutely. Create the specs on a house build that will create zero damage from a five point O on the Richter scale. And so. Just want to make sure we don't over commit to disasters or possible natural disasters that haven't happened in sixty plus, around about sixty years. So. I, I, earthquakes are, are possibility everywhere. We have seismic activity in Colorado. So it's obviously an issue. That's why I was on the list. I think Mr. Dominic. Pointed that out. Well, the reason I had my hand up, Mr. Dominic was, uh. I wanted to get, if you could just high level for us, not for me, I, I read the, but just, you know, and, and you did it. So I'm not going to ask you to do it again, but just the types of issues that are addressed. Because this is televised and you know, and, and our constituents need to hear the things that are considered. And, and has, and I agree with you hazardous material is significantly dangerous. My, my staff at, at the state's going to be issuing hazardous material permits, but it's not just trucks. It's the trains that travel through. Our community. It, it's all the above that can. Create significant issues. And if we're not prepared for those, or if we're not thinking about mitigation plans and. And projects to mitigate any of those issues or, or mitigate the risks even. It doesn't have to happen. We don't want any of these things to happen ever. But if we aren't doing projects to mitigate the risks. Then, then, then what are we really here for? You know, we're, we're here to, to try to protect from some of those issues. We also have to have. Industries to, to live our daily lives. And so trying to find the balance and mitigate the risks is, is exactly. What I would be, you know, concerned about. And so I appreciate you taking the initiative to, to jump in with Adams County, obviously. Economies of scale and jumping on with them was a, a good move because these, you know, five hundred page report from a consultant I promised wasn't cheap. Just the amount of effort and time that goes into that with, with the folks that work for the consulting agency. So I appreciate their effort as well. And the, the one question I do still have, is this the first time that we've had a FEMA approved plan in Commerce City outside of. The general Adams County plan itself?
You know, I, I don't know that for sure because I've only been here eight years, so I can't go back further than eight years. So, but I know. I, I believe we were part of the two thousand fourteen plan too. So we never, far, far as my knowledge, we never had a, a, just a hazard mitigation plan just for Commerce City. But I could be wrong because I, I don't know the history prior to my time. So that's.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, I, I, so again, I, I agree with Councilwoman Noble that we have some significant risks. Although they may be low because they are done appropriately. I'm not the expert in that field, but I, you know, I just took my family out to the arsenal today and you can just see all the, the gas lines and everything that are running through that. You know, they have them all marked pretty well. And so, you know, we're, I was taking. The family on a walk with a dog the other day and you saw petroleum. Gas line that I assume is the one that runs out to the, out to TIA and that runs right through. The community. So there are significant hazardous material risks and I appreciate your effort on getting us. A Commerce City specific plan that where we can go after, not just working with Adam County, but we can go after. Some mitigation efforts on our own. And then obviously we would always welcome additional support from the county and the state on those, those things like that. So. My last thing for you is if there's something that you guys identify as a need, like a, a more immediate need and we need to help advocate for that or do what we need to do. Please, or please, you know, get on our agenda and let us know because I think we would all be willing to hear that. And willing to support, you know, if it made sense. And so I appreciate your effort in getting in front of these issues. And finding a way for us to be eligible for, for those dollars to, to provide projects for our, our community.
Well, well, thank you, sir. And I just, just would like to maybe in an annex C, just highlight a couple of projects that we've identified that were. Based on incidents that we've had in the last couple of years. If you look on and in annex C towards the back, I think it's page twenty-one and page twenty-two. Identified three projects that we would like to. Do mitigation work on. One is emergency backup generators for the MSC. Which is a critical infrastructure resource. That's where a fleet's had. That's where streets and, and our parks. Which does a lot of snow operations. So if we would lose power at that facility. It would really hinder a lot of our capability. To provide services during, let's say a blizzard. And what happens in a blizzard is we have a higher possibility of losing power. And that's why we need to have our own power source. And. And then the other thing is for shelters, our two rec centers are identified as emergency evacuation shelters and overnight shelters and say during a blizzard. But they can't be operational if they don't have backup power generators. If they, if we lose power. So that's, that's an important, and that's listed in appendix C. And then the other thing is when you're talking about blizzards too, or, or losing during a blizzard. A lot of the local gas stations are closed or if they're, don't have power because of the blizzard. And our, our, our snowplow fleet. Does an excellent job, but they are running twenty-four seven. So if we have a forty-eight hour operation, they'll go through a tank of gas about every eight to twelve hours, depending on. You know, what they're plowing. We don't have the capability right now to. Supply our own fuel. So that means they have to find a, a station that is open. Which is limited during a severe blizzard or travel outside our city to trying to find us, something that's open that takes them away from time that they could be plowing roads. So that's another. Thing that we've identified as a internal infrastructure capability that we need to have is our own fuel station. And an advantage of that, that can kind of be a regional too for other first responders for the fire department could tap into that. Mason or the South Adams County Water District, their, their vehicles could tap into that too. To keep our city services, vital services running during, let's say a blizzard event. So, and then the other thing is that was one of our projects, and I think that's already been part of is the Fairfax Park drainage reconstruction. And I believe that's part of our CIP. But again, by having an approved hazard mitigation plan, we could. Offset some of our cost with a maybe potential grant dollars for that. So that's, that's again, that's the important, these three projects that we've identified, if we had an approved plan. Come December seventh, and that means we'll be eligible in January to start applying for some of these grants and competing with other jurisdictions. For that, that limited fund grantee. But that's, but that's the first step that we need to do.
So Mr. Dominic, I, I seem to remember, and I don't remember the details of those five hundred thousand or. Or a million dollars. But last year, did we not. Approve funding for the generator for the MSC?
That I'm not aware of because that, that I would have to. Okay.
Yes, we did. Good. I just, I just, when you said that, it just maybe triggered, triggered a memory of, you know, we, we went into some detail about that exact issue. We had that bomb cyclone. Created some issues. Not only for, for the MSC, but just out in the yard, not having lighting, how unsafe that is to get your plow prepared for work without lighting. So hopefully we can see that, you know, delivered in the near future because I agree with you. I, you know, I've worked in trucking. Operations my whole career and that's, you know, that, that creates a significant danger, not only for our employees, but for the, uh, the folks trying to utilize our. Transportation system during these storms.
That project is underway.
Thank you, Roger. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Noble.
Thank you so much. As Councilmember Hurst aptly pointed out, this is televised, so I don't want his comments to go unaddressed. I will quote from Earth Sciences Organization. It has been well known for decades. That any injection of fluids in the subsurface has the potential to induce earthquakes. That said, hydraulic fracturing has only been recognized as a source of induced earthquakes very recently. In the simplest conceptual model, fluids injected in a subsurface well must be. Connected to a fault via some permeable pathway. This allows the fluid pressure inside of the fault to increase during stimulation, hydraulically opening the fault. While hydraulically opened, the reduced clamping force on a fault makes it more likely a slip. And I'll go now to Oklahoma and the Oklahoman newspaper. According to Oklahoma Geological Survey records, recent stronger earthquakes have affected two areas in Kingfisher County. This was on July twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. Both appeared to be associated with well completion work. Well, completion work is of course fracking. And it also occurred in a study with results from Japan. The National Association. National Association of Ajurs has also put Colorado in their sights with regards to this issue as well. So I wanted to be able to address this so that all sides were left on the table. Thank you very much.
You said injection wells, there's none proposed in Commerce City and there's none in Adams County. That's what.
I didn't say injection wells. I didn't say that they were proposed, Mr. Hurst. Me, Councilmember Hurst.
Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Dominic or Chief Nichols regarding the Adams County Hazard Mitigation Plan?
No, sir. I believe Kirk did a good job of, of answering the questions. Again, one of the things that. I want to make sure we, the council understands is this is a Adams County mitigation hazard plan that we've piggybacked on. It has gone before all of the other municipalities and has been approved. And we are hoping that we can seek your approval on December seventh so that we are eligible for, for FEMA grant funding. If not, any mitigation plans that we do will be completely funded at the sole discretion of Commerce City. So it's important that we. Again, get this passed. And I also want to apologize last week for not recognizing that the plan was not in the packet. That is completely my fault for not checking. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. And thank you to you and Mr. Dominic for being here this evening to brief us on that and look forward to voting on it on the seventh. Last presentation for the evening is parking regulations proposal. And once again, Chief Nichols, Mr. Sheasley, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you again. I want to prepare you that this should be a relatively robust discussion because I know that there are a million questions. And, and as we go through some of the options, one of the things I want to make sure the council understands is there are a myriad of options on the table. And so present with me this evening, outside of Mr. City Attorney Sheasley. I also have Deputy Chief Moon and our traffic sergeant on the line to answer any pointed questions. That we may have. And so on that note, I will go through the presentation. Dylan, if you wouldn't mind. Next slide, there we go. So we're operating under a couple of premises that we hope everyone can agree on. The first one is that public streets are a public asset subject to city rules. And as we talk about parking, even the space in front of your home is considered public street. And so it is in fact, subject to city rules. And we'll talk about that a little bit later when we discuss at least one of our parking ordinances. Street parking options are diverse in Commerce City. Not only do we allow curbside parking, but there are some cul-de-sacs that have the center cut out. There are parking in neighborhoods. Near parks and a variety of parking options. That we need to consider whenever we're talking about any rule changes. Because they all are interdimensional and they may in fact interact with each other. So it's important to keep that in mind that. If you have a specific area in mind, keep in mind that it may affect some of those other areas. And. That's what staff and I will be able to point out to you as we're having this discussion. On and off street parking is considered in neighborhood planning. When we plan out neighborhoods, there isn't a. Uh, when we plan out neighborhoods, there isn't a formula that is derived on how parking is done. Uh, those are in the planning documents, and I'm sure council uh, has a lot more information about how neighborhood planning is done as it relates to to on-street parking as well as some of those other diverse options. And then finally, one of the premises we're operating under is that parking enforcement is resource intensive. Um, we do not have a dedicated dedicated parking enforcement team. Uh, currently, the only two entities inside of Commerce City that are doing parking enforcement is police officers and our community service officers. And they do those on a complaint basis with some exceptions that I'll get into a little bit later. Next slide. So the purpose of this discussion and the purpose of having a conversation around parking at all is again, to preserve public space for general use. Uh, again, public space belongs to the public and we want to make sure that its use is varied and wide. Uh, we would like to come away from this discussion with the ability to simplify regulations and create uniformity across the city. Um, as most of you are aware, what happens in the south part of the city is not necessarily what occurs in the north and vice versa. But any regulation or rule changes that we're going to make will have uh, citywide impact. And it's important to understand that we want to be uniform across the entire city so that rules aren't in different places and or at different times. Uh, we'd also like to make sure that we have a conversation with regarding to reducing or refocusing enforcement demands. Uh, that'll be a very direct question that we'll uh, ask council. Uh, again, we want to preserve law enforcement capacity. It has previously been mentioned. Uh, most of our parking parking enforcement is done on a complaint basis. Uh, there are some issues that come up as it relates to that, and we'll, I'm pretty sure we'll get into a conversation around that. Uh, but parking comes on the low end of our priority scale. Um, those are done during free time and as we've already mentioned, uh, with staffing challenges, COVID nineteen issues. And all the other things that twenty twenty has brought to us. Uh, reserving or preserving our law enforcement capacity to do the things that we need to do sort of needs to be at the 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 front end of the conversation. And then finally, for the watching public, because this is something that we get confused, uh, we get accused of often. Parking enforcement is compliance based. It is not revenue based. Uh, if you take a look at the fee schedule for Commerce City, it is one of the lowest in the in the metro region. So we absolutely do not do parking enforcement uh, to raise funds. Uh, it has been noted several times that police do parking enforcement to generate funds for the police budget. Absolutely is not true. All funds generated through parking enforcement goes to the general fund, not the police department. So want to clear up that misconception. And next slide, Dylan. So here are some resources that I wanted to make available, not only for council, uh, but for the general public that's viewing this presentation. Uh, the first one, two, three, four, five, the first five are actually Commerce City ordinances. You can go to C three gov uh, and do a search for either of these, and it will take you to Muni code where all of those are listed. So for ease of uh, finding, and we decided to put them here. And then finally, uh, the last uh, uh, hyperlink there takes you to the American Planning Association. And they have quite a lot of information regarding parking in residential areas. Uh, space, size of cars, type of community, you're trying to develop and a myriad of other uh, things that are useful as we start to determine more planning. As you know, Commerce City is still growing, and these are things that we absolutely need to take into consideration. Next slide, please. And so again, as I mentioned earlier, uh, during the presentation, there are a myriad of options that we can talk about and discuss and actually put into play. Uh, I did not try to list down all of those. Um, I think that's going to be the purpose of the discussion. Uh, but here are some that we wanted to make sure that council could in fact consider. And then uh, as we pop into some of the legal innuendos, uh, Mr. Sheasley will jump in as appropriate. Uh, so the first thing council probably needs to consider is uh, there may be some appetite to establish a permit parking system on an opt-in fee basis that is administered through the city or through a vendor. Uh, this is somebody that can go into a neighborhood and determine that this area has determinedly needed permit permit parking uh, due to some space limitations. And council has the ability to have that uh, opted in by a community. Set some direction for how that's going to work and have it administered through the city or the vendor. Uh, there are also some HOA options. Uh, as you know, the the police department or CSOs do not enforce HOA regulations. Those are agreements between associations and homeowners, not between the city and residents. Um, now there may be some overlap on some of those, uh, but if they're inside of city ordinance, we absolutely can enforce them. But a few of the HOA options include transition streets to private roads. That is an action that council could take. Uh, when roads are private roads, they do not receive city enforcement to some degree unless there's an agreed upon uh, transaction between the city and the HOA. But that is absolutely something that the city could look into to turn parking over directly to an HOA. Uh, you could also confirm HOA authority to privately enforce covenants against property owners through proper means. And I believe this is an area in which the city attorney may want to weigh in on. So Robert, if you're available.
Thank you, Chief, for the legal innuendos, as you put it. Um, I uh, wanted to touch on HOA issues because I know that's a a common discussion here. The city's consistent position has been that um, the covenants that bind neighborhoods about street parking are agreements, as the chief said, between all of the neighbors in that neighborhood. And that is enforced through the homeowners association. The city is not a party to those agreements. Those are private contracts. And the city doesn't condone enforcement actions occurring on public streets such as booting or ticketing. And that's been the city's position for a few years. We've never taken a position that we would interfere with the contracts uh, as they may be enforced. I'm not saying they are enforceable or not. Um, that is up to the private parties to determine as to whether that can be enforced privately. HOAs have mechanisms for enforcing um, their covenants on homeowners. Uh, one of the city's concerns is enforcing private covenants on visitors who are using public thoroughfares. Um, and so somebody who comes in doesn't have knowledge, um, or doesn't have um, even if it is posted, uh, is being subjected to a rule that isn't intended to apply to that street to the public. Um, but this option, the se- the first option the chief mentioned is certainly more expensive for residents in a neighborhood that were to take on private um, ownership of roads if the city were to do it because they would have to pay to maintain the roads. But it would give much freer authority over it and, but it would take obligations away from the city to ma- maintain that road. Um, the second option is one that other cities have done, it appears. And in the draft ordinance that we've prepared to implement what's being recommended tonight identifies very clearly that the regulations that the city is imposing aren't intended to um, I want to re-quote from it specifically, but are intended to preserve any existing um, HOA covenant, um, and to not stand in the way of that or to limit those private relationships. Um, so we are recommending that as an option to make sure the HOAs feel empowered to the extent they have the, they believe they have the authority um, with their own residents to handle that uh, their private rules as they affect parties to the covenant. So um, hopefully that is something that the council would endorse uh, going through this process. Thank you.
Then finally, the last bullet on the slide, again, something that council could entertain, plenty of communities have. As you could absolutely prohibit overnight street parking on public roadways, uh, should council desire. Next slide. Uh, and before I go on to the next slide, I I don't want to, certainly don't want to dump all of this information and get to the end, and we only talk about the last slide. Uh, so if there are any questions, uh, before we move on, certainly could stop, and I'm taking some notes as the discussion takes place.
Does anybody have any questions at this time? Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Nichols, for the um, presentation. Just curious, do you know, have we ever used any vendors for parking before?
That is a great question. I've only been here for five years, so I'm not certain if we've used them for vendors. I know we certainly do use one for the red light camera that's located in the southern portion of the city. That is a vendor um, arranged agreement that we have with them, but I'm uncertain about anything outside of five years.
Okay. And then since um, parking is a low priority right now, um, even before COVID um, happened. There's, this has been a serious problem. So I'm wondering like what happened around like that parking area on sixty third place and Ivy, because even before the COVID hit, this has been a serious um, parking issue concern. So you know, I'm just curious, do you know what happened around that area before COVID?
Uh, no, ma'am, I'm not. What was that address again?
Yeah, well, it's right in the core of the city, right behind the Dairy Queen, like on E sixty third place and Ivy. There's that vacant lot where there's a bunch of abandoned cars, boats, I, uh, RVs.
Yes, ma'am. I I am aware of it. Uh, we receive a variety of complaints regarding that. It's an area in the city that we routinely police. Uh, again, uh, and and I don't want to sound dismissive. This is truly a problem. Uh, but it is handled on a priority basis. So when we have other higher priority items working, that receive less attention. Uh, but when we certainly do have the free time, it is an area that is enforced. And I believe we were working with community development on that because that was a private lot that I believe he was allowing people to park in. Um, it became a problem, but I believe we worked out some most of those issues. Uh, needless to say, anything in the core city that someone can park a truck or a RV on, uh, it is our experience that they will, uh, whether it is private or not. Uh, so that's always an area that we have to pay attention to.
Okay, yeah, because um, you know, and another thing, and I don't know if this is coming up later, but since there's no HOAs in the core of the city. You know, what are some recommendations? Because that's one thing maybe um, Roger, you can let me know as well, because that's why I was requesting possibly that that the dog track have a HOA regulation, and I never heard anything back on that topic.
Yes, ma'am. And I think it's fair to say, we're going to get to that a little bit in the presentation, not specifically just the core city, but uh, some other options that council can explore as it relates to non-HOA property. Uh, because again, you're right, there are no HOAs in the southern part of the city. And so they would be virtually left uh, with the existing uh, rules and regulations and ordinances if we don't direct something towards public street parking. So thank you for the questions.
And Chief, if I may just respond to the Greyhound Park item, there is a management association, homeowners association of some sort on the Greyhound Park. Primarily due to maintenance of common areas. I don't know if it will have parking restrictions in it, though. I think the intent is that the city's standard restrictions would apply there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, some other points for council to consider. Uh, key parking enforcement requires additional personnel and processes or some other reduction in other services. Um, you know, we talked about the only two entities in the city currently that do parking enforcement are pu- the police officers and our uh, community service officers. That certainly could be expanded through a council ordinance. Um, one of the things we had talked about, and I've not had this conversation with the community uh, development director yet, but neighborhood services could be through ordinance allowed to write uh, parking enforcement. Um, uh, but again, when we talk about enhancing current enforcement efforts, uh, again, supplementing them with other enforcement officials is always uh, something that we could do. I would argue expanding that too greatly could be problematic and could entice even more problems. Uh, but it is something that could be considered. And then finally, as we talk about contract enforcement, uh, there are absolutely are a few private vendors out there that uh, through a variety of contract structures, one that I'm most familiar with is a percentage of the fees uh, that they write uh, is how they are paid. Um, so there are some contract enforcement vendors that we could contract out with to the city to do citywide enforcement. And so next slide. Again, other recommendations, one of the things we're taking a look at and asking council to consider. Uh, we would like to modify our parking ordinances to be uniform and enforceable. Uh, I think the city attorney mentioned that the ordinance that we drafted, um, we'd like to establish a uniform seventy two hour street parking rule. Uh, the current five hour rule, uh, unless it is in fact your own residence. Uh, and then again, as Robert mentioned earlier, confirm private enforcement of private parking covenants in residential districts between parties to the covenant. And I believe this is an area that the city attorney wanted to weigh in on.
Yes, and I'll touch on that, the seventy two hour and five hour one as well, Chief, just to note the proposed, one of the the things we talked through with the police department is the seventy two hour uniform rule. And Chief, I know we had discussed maintaining the adjacent to your own residence um, concept. I don't know where that ended up, though, but um, that I know uh, is consistent with a lot of other cities. Um, and you could speak more to enforcement issues on that. Um, I don't need to repeat, I think, the private enforcement on on parking covenants there. Um, I did that probably too much previously.
Thank you. And I don't know if uh, if DC Moon is is uh, available. He certainly could answer some questions. And I know the enforcement of the five hour rule has some uh, some limitations, and he can talk about the way that's at least conducted in Commerce City if he is available.
I I am available, Chief. Just confirm you can hear me?
Yes.
So the 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 five hour rule uh, that is currently in place is a um, complaint-driven only um, rule. So uh, when somebody does call in, we do have the ability if uh, somebody's parked correctly in front of another person's house um, five hours later to issue a parking summons. Um, and then continue to follow up every five hours after that. Uh, generally speaking, we try and get compliance by identifying who the owner of the vehicle is and getting them to move the vehicle uh, away from the front of the house. It 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 has its benefits in that we can typically resolve it peacefully. Um, after the third instance, we do have the ability to tow the vehicle. Uh, it rarely, um, if ever gets to that point, uh, where I, we're actually towing a vehicle. So I mean, if there's questions, I can address those.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yeah, thank you for everyone for this presentation, because I think it's it's an interesting conversation because there are certain issues that we've heard as a council, in my opinion, that we would like to address and like to see if there's solutions for. But I think you know, as with like, you know, parking at the parks, it becomes tough because it's just generalized for the whole city, and that's not necessarily problems everywhere. Um, and so really, my question and it might be more directed towards uh, Mr. Sheasley is you know, some of the issues that we've heard is about trailers, whether they're um, you know, RVs or commercial trailers, you know, i- in their ability to park on the street and what we can do about those. And I know there's concern about that. Um, whether it's, you know, having heavy trailers or even, I guess, empty trailers in residential areas. Um, and how we can consider residential areas, so on and so forth. Is there anything? Um, and I think the answer is no, but is there anything you know, that we can do legally to try to resolve some of those issues that may not focus as much on personal uh, personal vehicles, but more along the line of of recreational or commercial vehicles?
Yes, and if you may just want to hold the question and discussion for the next couple of slides after we get through these points. The council doesn't have to answer these questions now. It'll be followed up at the end. Um, just to see how this all fits in, but we do address RVs and utility trailers and that sort of thing. Um, based on a request that councilmember Alan Thomas made right before the pandemic started, so that will be coming up shortly.
Yep, appreciate it. I'll shut up and listen, thanks.
All right, Dylan, next slide, please. And here we are. Uh, again, recommendations uh, continued. Uh, council has the ability to completely eliminate, eliminate or significantly reduce the ability to park certain vehicles on streets, particularly in residential neighborhoods. And as councilmember Hurst alluded to, RVs, trailers, boats, work trucks. Uh, anything that you desire not to have on any residential neighborhood street uh, count outside of private uh, property, uh, council has the ability to restrict. And then there are some exceptions, uh, entirely within the property line next to single family or multifamily dwelling owned or occupied by the vehicle owner or lessee while actively loading and unloading. So moving trucks, um, yard work, construction vehicles that are in the process of actually working. Uh would there would be an exception to this, uh and then again, utility trailers and work trucks during active work as well. Uh but storing on the street overnight, council certainly has the ability uh to eliminate or significantly reduce the. Ability for those vehicles to park on streets.
And let me, chief, if I may, follow up on this, this was a a complicated thing to address, a number of cities have gone through and addressed RVs and trailers. Commerce City has a few really difficult code provisions to work with, so what we've proposed is an entirely new section that just talks about. Parking on any public street, because then we don't have to parse between what's residential and what's non-residential. And yes, there may be some streets that are not included, but we don't have staff that can go through and necessarily go block by block and street by street. Uh we're trying to create some uni- uniformity. Um while maintaining flexibility that we know enforcement won't occur on every street at all times. It'll occur where staff can get to a lot of places or where there are problems. Yes, we want the law to be enforced everywhere equally, and we believe it will be enforced equally. Um but if we parse things too narrowly. Um we run the risk of missing out on important streets or creating uncertain enforcement situations where you have officers. Or even if we expand this and create new positions, who are getting um tasked with with deciphering what is a particular block of a particular street. And um we've written it fairly narrowly uh to be any public street. Um unless it's entirely within your property line for single or multifamily that. Is occupied by the person that um is owning or using that RV or trailer. For unloading and unloading only, we talked about some time limits, forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours, but again, tracking time from an enforcement capacity is overwhelming. For any staff unless you have significant resources dedicated to it, we talked about a permit process, but again, that involves. Setting up a permitting um procedure and having staff to do it and having applications and possibly fees for that. Um and so what we've done to meet the requests from council is to simply say. We recommend doing away with parking of these types of vehicles on city streets, which are meant for transit primarily. Um to avoid the overwhelming of neighborhoods in the north and south, and there's also a blight component to it, where you have. Trucks um being left on streets constantly takes away from uh the appeal of streets um and their na- navigability. Uh and so that is what's proposed, and you all, there's there is a discussion slide down the road, but I hope that hits on what you're you're looking at. Your questions and councilman Brown Thomas, I know you had raised this issue significantly um earlier in the year.
Thank you, Robert, and next slide, please. Some other recommendations are that we're asking council to take a look at, uh take a look at increasing the par- parking fines. Uh particularly in designated zones and where there is increased repeat offenders. Um one of the things we've discovered and our traffic sergeant did a uh study on this last year. Um is that we are one of the lowest parking related, actually, traffic fines overall in the metro region. Uh and so, for instance, people that park a vehicle on a residential street in Commerce City and take an Uber to the airport. Uh the ticket price is worth uh is worth it as opposed to having to actually go park out at the airport. Um so we're asking that those uh parking fines be increased, and again, whether it's citywide designated zones or. Targeted repeat offenders is entirely up to the council's purview. Uh what we're also recommending is an overall increase in twenty dollars for all of the parking related fines. And that's one of the things I did not include on the packet, but our uh traffic schedule and fines is actually on C three gov. On the court website, you can take a look at it. And potentially double the fine if it's not paid within ten days, we think that adds a little bit of tea to making sure that parking is a. Uh is taken seriously in Commerce City. Uh again, previously mentioned, RV trailer work trucks and residence residential zones. Uh we are proposing a hundred dollar fine and possibly increase to two hundred dollars in thirty days. With a potential for a tow if it is not moved outside of that. Um again, the final bullet point, residential zone infractions, again, forty dollars and doubling those in ten days. Again, is just a proposal for council to take a look at, and again, as I've mentioned before, you have wide berth to sort of. Mix and match with how you deem you wanna uh handle these issues, some may be more important than others. Uh but again, getting a holistic approach to the parking problems associated in Commerce City is going to be pretty important. Next slide, please. And again, this is where we sit and listen, uh again, we have some staff here that is able to answer some questions and facilitate the discussion if there's some. Uh pointed questions, we're available for you, and here are some things we'd like to leave out of this study session with. Uh does council support changing the parking time limit in residential neighborhoods? Uh does council support clarifying HOA private enforcement as proposed? Does council support limiting RV and utility trailer parking as proposed? And does council wish to discuss enforcement options? And so with that, I believe that is the end of the presentation. And count, we are here to answer any questions or provide some clarification if you have any.
Questions from council to Mr. Sheasley or Chief Nichols? Uh I wanna go with council member Noble because I saw your hand up earlier and then you didn't get to ask your question, so you go ahead.
Thank you, I I do have a a few questions, um. Is there a reason beyond uh that your current budget? That you're suggesting uh contract vendors, are they better than um having like. Low level, not police officer kind of people do traffic enforcement? Or not traffic enforcement, parking enforcement?
Uh yeah, I wanna make sure we were talking about the same thing, would would absolutely not contract out traffic enforcement. Uh parking enforcement, despite its low level priority, some of these incidents can actually uh cause quite a bit of a ruckus in the neighborhood. And one of the reasons we're recommending, uh and again, it's up to council's purview. One of the reasons we're recommending taking a look at a private vendor is they will be solely dedicated to parking enforcement in the city. That is all that they do, which means you will get uh that sort of coverage on just about a twenty-four seven basis. As it is with our current employees doing it, uh the enforcement falls in line with other enforcement activity that we're taking. Um so for instance, if we're dealing with a fatal accident. It's probably gonna be a period of time where we're not going to be dealing with parking enforcement, and parking enforcement is one of those. I hate to, really hate to use the term low priority item for a police department, but it can really cause a lot of frustration for residents in the city. Um and when we show up six, seven, eight hours later, they don't really care that we were busy doing something else, using a private vendor. Those are things we could contract services through and we can demand some sort of response time, we have a lot of room to play with. Uh depending upon councils, uh how they wish to handle it.
And there are, yes, it it does matter a lot to residents, and it certainly even plays into quality community for a lifetime in many of their minds, that's for sure. Um I happen to have a big rig uh parked up the street right now for me, a block over. So I think um cabs should be part of this as well, not just the trailer itself. Uh they're they're kind of wide and kind of tall, and it's hard to see around them for one thing. Um I I truly believe seventy-two hours is far too long. I remember seeing um Mayor Hughesman commenting one time on about his own RV, and he can correct me if I'm. If I'm wrong, but that when um when they use it as they often do. That it's a pretty defined amount of time that he has it at his home. When they're leaving and has it at the home once they've returned before he returns it to the to the lot. And I'm not sure that three days makes sense, and that would apply then to uh residential cars. Um I think that's, that is longer than the period of tolerance for residents. So seventy, that's where seventy-two hours becomes a problem, is that that isn't what people are looking for, they're looking for a shorter amount of time. Maybe twenty-four hours at most. Something like that. But not seventy-two, um and let's see, what was the other one? Um. What about moving a vehicle? That's always been something that people say that all you have to do is move it a few inches and um you won't get a ticket.
That that's not entirely true, you have to demonstrate that the vehicle has been moved out of the parking space for a reasonable amount of time. Uh generally speaking, and again, this is very, the circumstances can change depending upon the time that we're out there. Uh generally speaking, two to three feet one way or another will generally qualify. Um and usually we can tell leaves don't settle underneath the car, spider webs are on the the wheels, there's a. A very non-scientific way to sort of make that determination, in addition to, we actually could talk chalk tires. Uh but as I mentioned earlier, uh that requires a full-on commitment. And I believe my sergeant is sending me a message right now, and he says the ordinance says a hundred feet, and it can't return back to the same spot.
Yeah, chief, that's the standard for abandoned vehicles, and that's essentially what what we're talking about here, and that's where the seventy-two hours comes from. Because anywhere in the city except for in front of somebody else's house, the standard is seventy-two hours already, and so. That's that seventy-two hours wasn't dreamed up out of out of thin air, um it may be too long, but that's um at the point at which a vehicle would be deemed abandoned, and that's been. The lot here for a while, but yeah, a hundred feet um from the space, yes, and it can't be returned for twenty-four hours.
Okay, that's great, so but as I say, in residential areas, it's a little too long, I think, for people, and uh. Now I can't remember my last point, booey, all right, thank you very much, I'd like to come back to it if I may. Appreciate it.
Um and just to clarify, we don't get to use that RV near as much as we used to, life of politics, um council member Madera.
Yeah, so if it's difficult to enforce the five hours already, um. How do you enforce, you know, an even longer period of time?
Well, we have the ability to enter uh vehicles into our CAD system, provided they're registered, we can certainly tag vehicles. Um when it is, when it's a five hour rule, there is absolutely no guarantee that we can actually get back there within a shift, depending upon what goes on. Uh but we absolutely could take a look at creating some sort of system where seventy-two hour vehicles, cuz we anticipate. For someone to leave a vehicle on the street for seventy-two hours in Commerce City is pretty significant, uh so that's a. And I'm gonna turn this over to DC Moon in a little bit, he'll be able to provide a little bit more perspective on it. But we think that'll be easier than a five hour rule to certainly enforce, uh DC Moon?
And I think it's important to go back to the the uh most of the parking enforcement we do in those situations are complaint-based. So we're waiting for somebody to call us and tell us that there's a vehicle parked in front of their house, and it's exceeded the five hour rule, or that it's. Been there for the seventy-two hours. Um we aren't keeping track of every vehicle that's in front of every residence in the city to know how long it's been there. So it it starts with um a complaint coming in, which there's typically some frustration associated with that. The so- somebody is always parking in that spot, or they're in front of their house and they're gonna have guests over, um they they can't park there. So where the difficulty comes in, as the chief alluded to, is getting back in that five hour, five hours later to issue the summons. Um and then at the ten hour mark and at the fifteen hour mark, at that point, you know, by the current ordinance, we could technically um tow it. So we're talking about issuing a ticket, and it it's easier to deal with it before the tensions are extremely high and the frustrations are there. Um and you you know, neighbors that have talked to each other and can't work it out, um that's when we get get involved, so it's already a frustrating. Uh a frustrating situation that we're dealing with, um and we're try- trying to get the vehicle moved, so compliance is typically better than. The issuance of the summons, so all of that coming together is where the the difficulty lies. Um and the frustrations that are occurring in the neighborhood, so we would much rather come and deal with the vehicle that's parked in front of the house before it results in. Some form of violence or, you know, longstanding feud between neighbors. Not exactly sure that answers it, but it does get complicated in getting back to the location to issue a summons. Which typically doesn't resolve the situation anyways, there's underlying issues a lot of times.
So you described a lot of frustration on the complaints part, um what does this do to resolve that or make that better?
I I don't know that it necessarily resolves the the frustration, um either way, um we're happy to get involved and assist in resolving the problem. Um and if that's, you know, not getting somebody to where they're parking in front of somebody's house all the time. Uh whether it's five hour, five hours or seventy-two hours. That that's where the difficulty comes in, um and getting the resources to go out and respond to the calls i- is the other other component to it.
I, uh councilman Madera, if I may, I think there's also a level of uh. There is a sense of entitlement, we literally have people calling the police simply because somebody parked in front of a house. When they have no intention of using the space at all, uh so there is also a sense of that is. My space in front of my street on a public roadway, and in five hours, that can compound itself pretty quickly. Uh one of the, and I've lived in one of those homes, uh where you have a corner lot with a stop sign, fire hydrant in the mailbox. And you, quite frankly, can never park in front of your house, um and so you're sort of forced to park in front of a neighbor's house. And again, we talk about the level of frustration for the homeowner that's affected by that parking spot being taken. There's also a level of frustration for the uh homeowner who can never park in front of their house. And also can't park in front of anybody else's house for more than five hours, um and then imagine having guests or visitors. You know, seventy-two hours just appears to be a little bit more lenient, but I will tell you that probably will not alleviate uh resident frustration. If someone happens to be parking in front of their house.
Yeah, I guess my concern is um. One, uh you're still gonna get those calls for service, right, it's not gonna change how many people call. Based off of people parking in front of their house, and two, I think if anything, it might make it even worse, right, because now. We're gonna get complaints that, well, yeah, we call the police all the time and they never do anything, they said they can park there for. You know, three days, but they'll probably say for weeks, because that's usually how thing gets filtered to us, but um. No, so. I'm just uh, I'm not so sure on the the seventy-two hours. Um you know, I I'm fine with making it something more than the five hours, I understand how that's difficult. To enforce, but um I think if we're gonna make it uniform for everything, we have to come up with something that's a little bit. More reasonable in terms of uh how long people can park there, whether it's twenty-four or forty-eight. Hours, I I just think uh seventy-two hours is a long time, and. I think we're gonna run into the same problem, right, it's, you're gonna have to show up three days later. And depending on what calls you have, you may not be able to show up, so now you have people waiting even longer for. You know, possibly a a summons or something to be issued, and it's just gonna compound that frustration more. So I I don't think I'd be supportive of seventy-two hours, I'd. I'd be supportive of going to something uniform, but either make it, you know, twenty-four, you know, even forty-eight hours. And my next question is, um what do we define as work trucks, cuz we have a lot of blue collar. Neighborhoods and uh you know, I have people with the plumbers in their box trucks, and you have. You know, people that pour concrete and have their uh pickup trucks with their uh company logo on the side of the door.
That is a great question, uh and quite frankly, council could determine what a work truck is. Uh I am familiar with communities that if you had a placard on the side of your Toyota Camry, it was considered a work vehicle. And you could not park it on the street at night, um so that would be something that council could work through legal to get defined. Generally speaking, um you're talking oversized vehicles that are, you know, plumbing related. I'm trying to paint a picture for you, um if that's what I would envision, but. I've seen communities where you put a magnetic sticker on the side of your vehicle, that becomes a work vehicle, and it's subject to those rules as well, so. I think that's something that we would have to get hammered out through the the ordinance-making process.
Because if I understand this right, you know, if you had a work truck and it's, even if. Because if I understand this right, you know, if you had a work truck, and it's, even if it's parked in front of your own home, you'd be getting fined.
That is a proposal that is on the table.
Yeah, I I think we'd have to work through that a little bit more. I just, I know, uh, that's gonna cause a lot of backlash, you know, in our community and you know, I think for a lot of people, the the problem becomes when now that you have multiple vehicles, including that work truck, and they're parking in front of other people's homes in addition to in front of their own home, that that's where you get this frustration, where people never have anywhere to park and you know, it's it's a little bit different, I think. Um, Commerce City, I think people are a little more possessive and feel a little more entitled than, you know, some other places are used to street parking where it's kind of just a free-for-all, and wherever you get a spot, you get a spot. So um, I I think, you know, maybe there's some perception and education that needs to go along with with all of this in order to to really make this ordinance effective. But yeah, I I think those are the two main issues that I saw with the the currently proposed issues. I think I'm generally in agreement with the everything else that you've outlined.
Thank you for the comment, sir.
Councilmember Alan Thomas.
Yes, thank you. Um, few questions and a few um points, but I definitely don't agree with changing the time, um, like the previous council members expressed, to seventy-two hours. I think that's way past an excess excessive amount of time, especially when, you know, we can't get things accomplished currently as it is um within the five hours. And I am just curious, how does the um Police Department um handle when someone does call, um, you know, with the concern it has been more than five hours? Because I've been notified by several residents um that they were told how could they prove it, etc. So how, what I, what is that process? Because I can't say before I um was on council, it doesn't matter if you live on a corner street or whatever, the rules are the rules within five hours. Um, just because someone else doesn't have room to park in front of their home. If a car's been in front of my home or whatever, and I do have plenty of parking, um, I personally experienced this situation, like I said, before I was on council, where a car had parked in front of my home for about twenty-four hours, and I notified the Police Department and was told that I don't own the road. And could I, how could I prove it? So how does the Police Department handle situations like that for residents? And how you know, how can they validate that if they call, then they, it it's a valid point?
Yeah, I think DC Moon's gonna answer that question for you, man.
So a a couple of things. There's, we've got to go to court and demonstrate that the vehicle has been there for more than five hours. So typically, it it's best if the officer knows the the time, marks a time, and goes five hours from there. With that being said, it is possible to issue the parking ticket based on uh, the testimony of um, a witness that that says that vehicle's been parked there for five hours, and 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 they can go to court and offer the proof uh, that the judge would determine if it's been there for five hours. Um, so issuing that parking summons um can occur one of those two ways. One of the difficulties with having a a resident say that it's been in front of my house for five hours is they then have to go to court and have to testify. And typically, that car is associated with the neighbor, um, something like that. So there is resistance or some apprehension um for people to um sign the summons as the complainant, saying that 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 violation did occur.
All right, and then um I'm confused and concerned about possibly issuing permits for RVs or boats, etc., because if we start issuing permits, a concern with that is so if I get a permit to put an RV on my home and want to pay a fine, can I keep getting permits, you know? Will there be a limited amount, or, you know, if we start giving?
We are not recommending councilmember permits for for RVs or or boats. That was an option that we looked at, and we 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 believed it would be cost-rehibitive to set that system up. Sorry to cut you off. I just wanted to make sure you knew that, yeah.
Okay, thanks. And then one other concern, if you, if you do have, is it somewhere in the writing if a RV is on your property? Um, does it say people can't be living in that RV as well, even if it's like off the road?
Those are separate regulations that we're not addressing here. Uh, these are only concerning on-street parking. There are limits in the city about um living in uh, RVs, motor vehicles, that sort of thing, I believe, on on property. I I don't know that where that is specifically, but I believe that exists. There are also restrictions on parking oversized vehicles and RVs on on private property essentially, or in residential districts that don't talk about on-street parking, and so I didn't really want to get into that here. Yes, we do have restrictions.
Okay, because I thought I saw that in the present PowerPoint that was sent to us. But another question, um, is, I know we're not doing this um for revenue or anything, but is it possible? You recommended increasing it to twenty dollars, and what about um increasing it possibly to more? Because this is a serious concern in the core of the city. Um, you know, and we're saying COVID, this and that. I've lived in Commerce City all my life. In the last year, it has gotten worse in the last eight years. And, you know, it, I think something seriously needs to be done to address it, you know, whether, like you said, a possible vendor or something, because, I mean, I I think it's out of control, and at least the residents in my ward and a lot of the core of the city, you know, are really frustrated. And most of my calls and concerns each week to Annette or Roger are about these violations.
It is possible to increase those fines. Sorry, Chief, I just thought I'd hit that and clarify. The RV living uh, living in an RV is addressed in this ordinance, but in the context of living on the streets. So just to, that's why I was in the presentation, just to clarify that while you're parked, you can't reside in an RV. Um, that is in in the ordinance. But yes, the fine structures, unless they go to a place that I don't think you'd go, uh, would are are within council's discretion to set. But uh, knowing that the complaint over a ticket would increase, I'm sure the chief would speak to this, that if the price is much higher to go with it. Um, so that's what council would have to to address. And we do, as requested, have a higher rate proposed for RVs and people violating that specific provision.
Um, I think, I think that's all I had for now.
Councilman Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so just going down the considerations, Chief. Uh, the HOA, where I think it's a good idea north, but it wouldn't have any any, any, it wouldn't affect anything in the core city. And um, and I think that's a huge problem, uh, because those streets are also narrow. So uh, I think we just got to be very uh balanced, right? I mean, we'll have enforcement up here, but then the core city, we're gonna have the same problems. So I don't know where, what we could do with having that HOA um, on what kind of agreements we could have. And would these agreements also be? There's so many HOAs up north, right? So would they all have an agreement separately compared to like where I live, and then the river ri- River Run, and then the dunes? I mean, they would all be separate agreements?
Councilmember, I think I can clarify, we're not talking about new agreements between the city and the HOAs to do enforcement. Um, where you live, there, you are a party to an agreement with all the rest of your neighbors. If you have covenants that are recorded against your property, and that all of your neighbors have the right to enforce that essentially, and it's enforced through the HOA. Um, and those are the contracts that we're talking about. Those exist, and those are between the residences of a particular area. So there wouldn't be disparate enforcement against the public, um, is the concept. It would all be the same. Um, if somebody who lives in the southern portion of the city were to go park in the northern part of the city, they would be subject to the same laws. But a person who lives in that neighborhood may be accountable to their neighbors for parking violations by their guests or by them.
Okay. And then I I I think I think it's a good idea to get a contract enforcement. I think um, something like that. Uh, because we we get tons of these. Everybody on this, on on this council meeting gets tons of complaints, whether it's the core city, the North Range, it's all over. Um, so uh, I'm not for the seventy-two hours, I think that's a long time. Um, so I think uh, like a couple of my colleagues said, I think a a good medium would be like twenty-four hours. Um, five sometimes is very difficult, and I agree. Um, but somewhere between seventy-two is a lot. Um, and then, you know, to Oscar's point, I I totally agree with him that we do have a lot of but also I know that they do have concrete trucks, plumbers' trucks, all in front of one resident. And how do we uh, how how does that, where's that balance? You know, I always think of my grandma's house on Doris Court. Her neighbor has, and and I've filed complaints, I would say about eight vehicles. And it's just, you can never park there, never. Um, he even made his own driveway in his house, because he didn't have a driveway now. So uh, and he's just trying to make a living, right? Um, and so I think we have to definitely discuss that on how we really look at that, because yeah, there's a lot of contractors out there, a lot of families that work that, but at whose expense? Your neighbor's expense, that they could park all those trucks in front of their, and it, so um, I think that's a little tricky. Um, and then the fines, I definitely agree with all of them going up. I I I definitely agree with all of them going up. I think um, I've again, living on one hundred and fourth, I've seen people park by Val Creek, the school, and that car's there for ten days, and what they probably did is went to the airport, right? So um, I I definitely would, uh, yeah, the the fees, I think, have to go up. So um, this is a hard thing, and I appreciate you all and your staff to bring this up. Um, you guys probably get the complaints too, and we get beat up for it all the time. Um, and I'm glad we're just trying to be proactive. Um, and I think, uh, you know, hopefully our residency that we're just trying to do something, but it's a very difficult um subject. So thank you.
Councilman Wadiola, to your other comment, uh, referenced the parking complaints that we received. Uh, today, just through our CRM system, we average about two parking complaints a day in Commerce City. We had almost eight hundred and thirty-five of them. That's not to include the ones where people call nine-one-one or the ones that are referred to us through council. So uh, we realize it is a huge lift. We also realize that for every cause, there's going to be an effect. Um, some residents will certainly enjoy changes, and some will not. Uh, it is just a matter of what council is is comfortable with us doing. So I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hearst.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I I I agree. You know, this is a significant problem, as as Chief just said. We have uh, a significant amount of complaints. Obviously, eight hundred and thirty-five in a year is a significant issue. But I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't play a little bit of a devil's advocate, so you can all think of the other side as well. You know, the small businesses, as as Councilman Madera said, um, you know, asking a single-person business to go find a, you know, a a business location to park their single uh, construction truck seems a little uh a little much, if if you will. And so, you know, if we're, if we're on that track, I'd propose multiple work vehicles. So if you have two magnets on the side of your, or or a magnet on two trucks that says, you know, Craig's Craig's Construction, um, you know, and you got two or three of those sitting in front of your house. Okay, multiples might might make sense for me. This is my perspective. Um, because we're we're talking about, you know, retaining and helping small businesses survive in this, you know, in this situation. Um, so I don't think we can, we can forget about that. Um, you know, if you, you know, if you were a local contractor or a roofer, and you just park your truck in front of your house on a daily basis, or because your neighbor had a friend over that parked in front of your house, and now you're parking in front of a neighbor's house, that could be your personal vehicle as well. It doesn't just, uh, you know, constitute as only a work truck. You might go to King Supers in that truck. You might take your kids to the movie in that truck. And so how do we distinguish that when we're identifying it as a work truck? It's not just a work truck. They're trying to market their business at King Supers while they're taking their kids there to get groceries. You know, it's, so that becomes tough for me um, when we just single that out. And so I I could see, if you're trying to run a business out of your home, and that business heavily involves transportation of multiple vehicles, okay, now we got to start talking about having a business location that supports your truck, your your parking needs. So multiples, whether that's two or three or whatever, uh, that would be my suggestion in that sense. Um, and then the seventy-two-hour thing, the reason I think that's a, you know, an idea for us to consider is what about the weekend? If if, you know, I call it a day on Friday night, and I don't have a thing to do this weekend, and I want to stay in my house and, you know, do whatever and watch football on Sunday, and I don't get up until, you know, six AM, ready to roll Monday, did I just violate the law because I parked, you know, five feet in front of my neighbor's, you know, property line? It, of course, that's very general. I'm just saying, from a devil's advocate point of view, some of these things can turn into these problems and be and create secondary issues for our enforcement folks, um, because now they're at the scene trying to determine, you know, who's wrong in the matter. And and that's, that's just a perspective that I don't want us to forget. And I think this becomes, you know, with those two things, it becomes a a community issue that we we may consider having, um, you know, a public meeting about, because I think we need to hear from both sides, and I think we do hear, obviously, eight hundred and thirty-five times from homeowners. Well, what about that, the small business perspective, and and trying to understand what their needs are, and why they are, why they are forced to park at their house? Um, everybody knows the cost of real estate, commercial real estate, you know, Denver Metro. And if I'm trying to run, you know, a single-person um construct, construction company that does basements or some it's not likely that that um, I'm gonna be able to afford a a brick-and-mortar location that will uh allow for my truck to park there on a daily basis. So um, so the the other thing too is, you know, Chief started the conversation about clarifying that the funds collected in in parking uh enforcement goes to the general fund. But we're, then we're suggesting that we go to a contract um enforcement. They have the incentive to write more tickets, because they get a percentage of each ticket written. And so then you're looking at, again, hey, now they're just writing tickets to get more money. I'm not saying that's wrong, because if you parked in the wrong spot, you shouldn't have parked there. But if that's already a current issue that we're we're trying to manage, that's a possibility as well. Um, so so I think this is a a obviously an issue that all sides of the city have in in some way, shape, or form. Maybe it's more about RVs up north, and maybe it's more about semi-trailers down south. I I love, um, I love that we're at least trying to address this because it's a significant issue, but just from the devil's advocate point that I tried to play right there, I I can, you know, we can see some holes that we all have to consider when making serious decisions like this, because one thing, you know, we address one problem and create another. It's what I really don't want us to do, because in two years from now, when we're getting complaints that small businesses are leaving our town because they can't park their one work truck in front of their house, you know, what are we trying to do then? Some of it may be exaggerated from my point of view. I just want to make sure that we're considering all sides. We all want to fix this problem, but let's not um, you know, silence the other, opposing views' voice by doing so, and try to work through these issues, seeing all sides and finding a solution that fits that. And 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 Chief, you and your staff did a great job laying out options. I'm not saying that at all. I just want to make sure that we're hearing, you know, the voice of everybody. And and right now, I think all of us are in agreement that it's an issue we want to address. But are we leaving out some of those, you know, potential concerns that could be created by the direction that we're leaning towards? And so um, I'm not necessarily saying I think all of those uh have to be solved. I just want us to make sure that we're considering them while we're having this discussion.
Councilmember Noble.
Thank you very much. Um, I remembered what I wanted to ask about. So, uh, Robert, with regards to HOAs, HOAs have often said that um, they can't enforce their CCNRs because they step on the toes of uh Commerce Cities. I've heard that over and over and over and over again. So are you saying tonight that that is actually a wrong interpretation by the HOAs?
I'm saying that I think we have been consistent since council had me issue a cease and desist letter a few years back um, to one particular HOA, um, insisting that enforcement not occur on streets. Um, to one particular HOA, um, insisting that enforcement not occur on streets. I have no opinion, I've not researched and I'm, I can't offer an opinion on the enforceability of CCRs as between homeowners. And, and the HOA if they extend to public streets. There are provisions in the Land Development Code that say that when you dedicate land, when you give up the property for the roadway. No covenants extend to the middle of that street. There, it's free and clear of, of any restrictions. Whether that impacts a homeowner's obligations, I don't have an opinion on. That would be a matter between the homeowner and, and the HOA. Um, but I do have the opinion that that would not apply to the public at large and that HOA restrictions don't apply. To members of the public parking on what is city property that has been dedicated to the city and is maintained by the city. So I don't know how each HOA is interpreting that, um, and they may have taken some posture that. That per se, that view means that they can't enforce their CCRs, then that is their view of the enforceability of their CCRs. And I, I think there may be mechanisms to do that, but they have to determine that of their own, um, with their own legal counsel.
Couldn't we look upon it the same way that we do some other legislation? If your, uh, restrictions are greater than the city's. You can still enforce them, you know, fines, because obviously they would be fines in an HOA. And then you encumber the property and that kind of stuff. It's far different than what a city would do.
We could, there, there, there are multiple aspects to that. The first being that in some of these cases. The dedications of property, you know, the, the process is the developer plans to develop records the CCRs. And then maybe plats and dedicates the property or does it after. In some cases, they amend their covenants after they've dedicated the property. None of which would apply to the city streets, in my opinion. And so it doesn't even extend that far. Um, the second would be to members of the public. If somebody who doesn't live in a particular neighborhood were to go and park in a neighborhood. Um, them being subject to more restrictive. Provisions on a public thoroughfare that is maintained by public taxpayer money. Seems significantly unfair and creates a patchwork of enforcement throughout the city and could, and could increase the risk of confrontation. Um, that the police would have to get involved with. There are a number of reasons for not doing that. And that's why private maintenance, private roads, yes, the answer is absolutely and obliquely. People can do their own restrictions as they see fit, but those neighborhoods are for the benefit and enjoyment of the entirety of the public. Including people that don't live in Commerce City, even though it's unlikely that they'll be traveling on them.
Even as late as today, I saw someone write in social media that the street in front of her home belongs to her. And that people need to remember that, that, that it is their street and, you know, their portion where their yard begins and ends. I think that what we need to think about too sometimes is that people don't plan for the future. And so they don't buy a home with enough room for parking. You know, if you, if you have three cars, maybe you need a three-car garage or, uh, you shouldn't be on a particular street. That might has, have other issues on it, like a fire hydrant and stop sign and, and that kind of stuff that that can cause a problem also. And the final thing I was concerned about work trucks also because there's quite a few in, um, the area that I lived in, Reunion. And I was wondering if we were talking about permits at all, what about permitting one work truck? So that, um, and then it would also be defined by size. I don't want somebody to say my semi truck with a big rig is a work truck. It needs to be of a reasonable scale that would say fit in a parking spot. And a normal parking spot, however long that is, is that twenty feet or something? But then that way, if there, if they had to get a permit that didn't hopefully cost them any money, they could put the sticker in their window. And you would know which ones are excess and which ones aren't.
Okay, I wanted to, to, uh, respond to Councilmember Noble's question regarding permits. Uh, it's important to remember, we currently do not have that, uh, business inside the city. So that would be a process that would have to be simply created. And then the enforcement, that's, that would be a heavy lift. Uh, certainly something I don't think staff is in a position to recommend, but if that is council's desire, that is absolutely something that we could take a look at about permitting. But that leads into all sorts of other problems that this house has a permit for a vehicle to be parked legally on the street. But is it only in front of their house or somebody else's house or anywhere on the public street? And you'll bring up the issue where they also have five other cars. Uh, so again, it's just that finding that right balance is going to be important and. Fits all solution.
Hmm, but I'm just looking at the issue of work trucks. I know that there are people who have many cars, you know, you have, uh, the husband, the, I mean, you know, the spouses. The, uh, you have multiple children who are over sixteen, next thing you know, you can be at, at that many. There are some homes in our area that are used by, uh, multiple people living in one home who have no relationship to each other. And they all have a number of cars also. So I'm not talking about that. That's yet another discussion, I suppose. But I was just thinking about the work trucks because the recommendations included not having work trucks on the street. And is there a way to limit them so that there's only one truck? It's not like everyone, um, you know, that there are multiple trucks as has, as has been discussed earlier.
Just thinking off the top of my head and again, in my, uh, previous department that I came from. Work truck was defined by how the truck was registered. So if it was registered to a business, it was a work truck. If it was registered to, and a person, um, then it would not qualify. So that is one avenue that. Again, you could take a look at and, and have council discussion around. That's outside the obvious, but you still may run it. And then you, I would still believe you need to have some size restrictions. Uh, because I believe in Councilmember Hurst would be in a better position to tell me. I think you probably could personally register a big rig cab as you just alluded to and have that registered as your POV. So. Having a really broad discussion is going to be important.
Yeah, exactly. You could be an, you could be an owner operator of one of those semi trucks, so, and the cab. No, the cab really, the rest of it, maybe not. You lease those, you trade for those, whatever you do. But as you mentioned, Councilmember Hurst knows the answer to that question.
Yeah, I, I mean, I do, but the only thing I would say is, you know. There's not a single cab or, or truck out there that doesn't have to run around with an oversized vehicle, uh, signage on it. That is illegal in size. So, yeah, semi trucks, as long as they're within eight foot six in terms of width, they're legal. And, and that's where I start to, to, you know, again, play devil's advocate. Are we then going to start defining outside of federal DOT regulation? What is a legal and non-legal truck to enter a property? Now, can we have length restrictions and weight restrictions on our roads because we own them? Hell, yeah, let's do that. I mean, that, let's consider that, um. But a single cab truck, again, a, as the chief just, you want to start playing games? Then you're going to find somebody who wants to play the game a little better than you. They're going to go find a way to beat the system. And you know, I don't want to call out anybody specifically, but I know somebody in Reunion who delivers to grocery stores here in the area. Which is very critical right now, who paid almost sixty thousand dollars in taxes last year. And he's telling me, how can I get a place to park my truck? I give all my money back to the government. Um, and, and of course, that, that may be a bit exaggerated because he made good money doing that. But at the same time, he's got, you know, he's got to feed his family and you pay for his house and everything else. And so it is a single person business, you know, trying to, trying to make their way. Because they chose to be a truck driver, you know, I'm not asking you to applaud them, but we have to, you know, we have to be realistic in, in. You know, our expectations. Should they maybe consider go moving out into the country where, yeah, possibly. I don't know. But I'm just saying, you know, we just have to consider that. I'm not saying, you know, I'm not advocating for one way or another. I just, when we talk about. Uh, I, I just don't want the greasy, uh, the, the squeaky road to get the grease always, you know. Obviously, we have homeowners that are significant, this is a significant concern. I'm not discounting that whatsoever. But the person with the truck, maybe not be complaining, but there's some, there's a voice there that we must consider as to why they're doing that. Why they haven't moved, um, onto a, a commercial property for their business. There, there's a reason, you know, and, and it's probably financial, but then we're going to go and charge them money. Um, and create another financial situation. So we're trying to force them into a budgetary decision that they already made the decision they can't afford. And so that, again, just want those, those points to be considered. We're not the federal DOT. We can't define what's. I don't think we should move into the world of defining what's a legal vehicle and not a legal vehicle. But there are other avenues that I think we can legally explore in terms of weight limit, limitations, length limitations. Um, I know metro districts and HOAs do have length limitations, um, for good reason. But then, then you want to, you know, take delivery on your, um. I don't know, some type of workout equipment and it has to come on a semi. Now that semi can't come down your street because of the length limitation. Those are the types of things that I started going, well, let's not put ourselves in a corner. We have to, you know, be flexible. And have some consideration of everything that actually happens in our transportation network. Um, but I also want to solve the problem where someone comes and parks on my street and goes, you know, on a fourteen-day Hawaii trip. And, you know, leaves their car there, um, because it was cheaper to take a twenty-five-dollar Uber from my house than it was from their house in Arvada or something, you know? So, a-again, I don't have all the solutions. I just want to make sure we're considering all aspects of this before we move forward.
Uh, thank you, Chief and Mr. Sheasley for bringing this forward. Um, I think we've been about a year waiting to get to this point where we have this conversation and I'm glad that we're finally here. And hopefully we can expedite the process to get this, uh, move through the system as quickly as possible. I say that because as we all know this, um, yeah, this is one of the biggest complaints that we receive from residents. Um, we receive it on both ends. We receive it on, you know, those that got the ticket and we receive it those that are upset because somebody's parked their pop-up camper in front of somebody's house. Or because somebody's got an RV or a food truck or something else down there. Um, as far as the, uh, the classification on a work truck, you know, we have a lot of people that, that drive a work truck home. They drive a work van home. We have realtors out there with signs on the side of their vehicle. We have people that, uh, you know, that's their livelihood. And I would never want to be in a situation where we are trying to prevent somebody from being able to, to earn a living. And that includes being able to commute back and forth with that work truck. It's inconceivable to think that people are going to jump in their own personal vehicle, drive to a job site or drive to a shop. And get load up into a work truck and then drive out to the work, do the job, drive back. That's just not how people operate. People operate by taking their work truck home. People, and as a matter of fact, that's a perk for a lot of people whenever they do get employed, is to have a work vehicle. So I have no desire to regulate the ability of somebody to drive their work truck. When we took over our HOA, um, here in our metro district, we had a lengthy conversation over this very topic. And what we settled on is if you're required to get a commercial driver's license to operate that vehicle, you can't operate that or park that vehicle in our neighborhood. And I think that's a pretty smooth way to just handle it. If you're required to have a CDO to operate it, you can't park it in the residential neighborhood. And I think that, that's a, a pretty, again, easy way to do that. Um, the, the RV thing is, is a huge one and, and I've seen people that feel that seventy-two hours isn't enough time in order to unload their RV. Um, yeah, you know, I have a, I have a forty-four-foot trailer and I'll tell you whenever we come home from a camping trip, whenever we are able to go. I don't even turn my truck off. It idles in the front until we get the RV unloaded. Everything is unloaded and then we go park it. And that's just the, the workflow that we have. So I think that having the ability for people to bring their RV home. You plug it in, you charge your batteries, you fill your water tanks, you do the stuff that needs to be, you know, refrigerators and RVs oftentimes require about twenty-four hours to cool down. So you have to have enough time for somebody to be able to bring it home, get it turned on, get it cooled down. And get it operational before you get ready to load on your groceries in it and start taking off. So, um, you know, when we first moved into the neighborhood, we had a very stringent HOA com- uh, management company. That I had to notify them anytime I was going to bring it home and I had to notify them when it would be home and when it would leave. You know, I mean, that's pretty, and, and, and it went away to the point where as long as we were under seventy-two hours, we were okay. I think seventy-two hours is a little bit excessive on an RV. I think forty-eight hours on the way out and on the way in, I think, is a pretty fair thing to say that people can do that. So that's where my preference would be that the ordinance allows an RV to be on a street for twenty, for forty-eight hours. I think where we really run into a problem though is we run into this, well, they moved it six inches. And, and I know that there was a pop-up trailer in, in particular because the resident that was upset about it contacted me weekly. It's still there, it's still there, it's still there. And the answers that we're constantly being given is went out, looked at it, it's been moved. Went out, looked at it, it's been moved. And so I think the way you get around that is you say it's allowed to be on that street for a certain amount of time. And you don't put it into, and the same with vehicles. You don't say, hey, as long as it's been moved because, you know, okay, I moved it ten feet, I moved it a hundred feet, whatever. It's still there, it's still the ice or the neighbors that are around there still have to contend with it. So don't allow it to be on that street for longer than whatever the time period is and just be done with it. Um, the five-hour rule, I know it is a pain to enforce, but you know, the five-hour rule allows people to be able to park in for another own home. And I hate to do away with something like that because there are a lot of people that we see these residences where five, six unaccompanied individuals. Single individuals living in a house, not enough parking, and they're really impacting their neighbors. So I don't have a problem with the five-hour rule. But I think what it comes down to is two things. One, allow the HOAs to enforce their covenants. And that includes if you, if I park my boat, like, if I park, if I had a boat and I park it in front of my house, it shouldn't be allowed to be there for too long. Let the HOA enforce that because that's part of their covenants. Let them enforce the RV rule, let them enforce the trailer rule, whatever it is that's out there. And get it away from us having to do that. They have that mechanism. That's a contractual obligation that you enter into whenever you go and you. Uh, purchase a house with an HOA. So I have no problem. And again, Thornton, and we brought this up, uh, a year and some change ago, whenever this first came up. Thornton allows people to be able to, or allows HOAs to be able to enforce parking on their streets. I don't agree with allowing them to boot. I don't agree with allowing them to tow. I think whenever you run into that, now we start worrying about who assumes liability. But being able to assign a fine based on your covenant, by all means, go ahead and do it. I also think having a vendor do parking enforcement is absolutely the way to go. Our officers have more important things to be doing out there than worrying about writing parking tickets. And that includes parking too close to the stop sign. That includes parking, you know, too long in, in this area, that area, whatever. Let an outside vendor come in and do that. And we're just going to have to accept the fact that people are going to go write tickets for the fact that people are not parking legally. That's just the way that is. So I think I've covered all my points on the proposed ordinance that I wanted to cover and I think.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Man, just ask, uh, you made a comment about RV parking in seventy-two hours. I wanted to make it clear for everybody. The proposal, um, is that RVs only be parked for the time needed to actively load and unload. So there wasn't a seventy-two-hour rule for that. So I know you're proposing forty-eight hours. I just want to make sure that was, that everybody understood that that was.
Right. And, and, and again, as, as, as an RV owner, I don't think that that's a reasonable expectation, you know, again. RV fridges aren't like your home fridge. You don't just plug it in and it just automatically cools down an RV fridge. I, I say that there's a lot of RVs now that have residential fridges in it, but a standard RV fridge that runs on ammonia actually requires time in about twenty-four hours. To get cooled down and be operational. You have to give the RV owner an opportunity to be able to park it there in order to get that thing started up. As well as you plug it in to charge your batteries, you plug in, you know, you hook up your water hose in order to fill your water tanks and things like that. So I don't think that just saying active unloading and loading is the right way to go. I think you have to give people a time as well as, you know, not just that, but if you have to winterize your RV, you got to do things like that. I mean, those are things that you do. You know, using your toolbox in your garage and stuff. And I can't say that it would be fair to people that have an RV or a boat or whatever. To, you, only when you're actively loading and unloading. That's why I proposed the forty-eight-hour rule.
Thank you. So I make sure, uh, we'll need direction from council on that. I think it, it can be done. It, it creates enforcement issues for sure, but it, it can be done just as with any time limit. So, but that's great points.
Councilmember Hurst.
Sorry, man, I didn't, don't mean to come on behind you, but, um, I, as you were talking, I just realized I didn't check off one of my points. But, but what you were just talking about is we, um, have dealt with that in our neighborhood, the bachelor district. Not just here. I'm sure it's happened in several other neighborhoods, but what happens is. You get, whether it's an RV or a work truck or whatever the case is, you get covenant enforcement will come in and say, okay. We're gonna, we're gonna tell this work truck, um, this big box truck, we, you know, you can't park in your driveway. And they go, okay, cool. I'm gonna park on the street. And then, then someone calls them about the street. Okay, I'm gonna go park in the driveway. I know the, the HOA only comes around on Mondays. Or, you know, they learn the schedule, whatever that may be. And they just play that game back and forth, back and, and I'm sure it's frustrating for, for enforcement. Because they're out there, you know, every other week seeing the same thing. Well, it's in his driveway now. I can't do anything on private property. Back and forth, back and forth. And so we see that game being played all over the place, but I know specifically of several, you know. From the metro district side, I've heard several complaints on that. But one other thing that I'm not going to be popular for, um, but I have to call out as my last point from a devil's advocate. Is in this same meeting, we, we've talked about people can legally live on our street, but they can't legally live in a car on our street. Um, and it just beca- becomes, you know, really hard on, okay, so. You know, I'll get rid of my camper and live on the, on the grass next to the sidewalk then, you know, because that's legal, but it's not legal for me to live in my camper. On the street, both are pro- public property, uh, both in the public right of way, but. We're just, it it just seems contradictory. I don't want people to live in their campers on the street, but that's what we said in this meeting. It just seems. Um, frustrating from somebody who's like, look, I'm trying not to be homeless by buying a cheap camper and living, living, but. Um, because the laws, it'd be better for me to live on the street. Uh, in a tent next to the street here instead of living um in my camper, you know, parked next to the sidewalk. Don't, don't think it's right on, you know, but that, that's really what we said in this meeting and and I'm sure that's frustrating for some people.
Okay, any other come, uh, council member Noble?
I wanna go back to the comment I made earlier about the thirty to forty million people who may be evicted by the end of December. And that was discussed at the National League of Cities Conference last week. Uh, they were talking about that and how we need to address it. So uh, the point that was just made by a council member Hurst is actually really important. We do need to be thinking. About this. I'm not suggesting that our streets become um, uh, the home. For these thousands of people who in the area who may find themselves evicted very soon. But we probably need to have some ideas about where they might all wind up. And what we can make possible for them, which is, you know, another good reason for the homeless navigator, but. We're going to have this issue that's going to be coming forward. I've seen um, RVs lined up along the light rail going into downtown Denver. On the um, A-line. So that's a big jump. In the number of RVs just in the last uh, three months probably. So thank you for uh, for bringing that issue up because it is really important. We do have to think about that. It, not tonight. But it's something to think about. Thank you very much, Chief Nichols, for presenting this and thank you very much, Mr. Sheasley for um. Augmenting with uh, your legal knowledge.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to summarize so that I have a good idea where I'm at with the homework that's required. Um, from what I understand in tonight's discussion, uh, we didn't have anybody that was opposed to increasing the fines. So we'll bring you back a new fine schedule that uh, is in concert with what we've proposed. We will also bring you back some options on vendor enforcement, uh, for you to take a look at, make a determination about moving forward with long term. Uh, as I understand, we are not in favor of a seventy-two hour general parking rule. Uh, but council was more comfortable with either a twenty-four or forty-eight hour rule. So we will work on bringing something back that discusses that. And as it relates to work truck trailers and RVs, um, we were a little. We were kinda all over the place, so I'd like to get some, some further direction on that. Uh. And and again, one of the options that council has is to do nothing. Want to make sure that we're clear with that. We could keep things the way that they are as well. Uh, but as it relates to, and I know we talked about RVs, we talked about work trucks in a different category. And we really didn't talk about trailers and uh, lawn keeping equipment and some of the issues that we deal with down. At least in the cloud, quite frankly, in both parts of the city. Um, and so are, would you like for us to bring you something back that. Deals with each of those individually? That may be a lot of work and uh, will certainly, there'll be different rules depending upon which vehicle you have. Would you like for us to take a look at these all in um, uniformity across the board and. Bring it back for a separate issue, just work trucks, RVs, trailers, and that's a separate discussion.
And Chief, if I can, and and Mayor and Council, the ordinance is written right now. We can make these changes. If we were to exclude work trucks and just go with RVs and trailers, um, utility trailers, that sort of thing. Um, including possibly a longer time limit than council wanted. If there was consensus on that, we could get that back in front of you very quickly for actual consideration as an ordinance. Um, or as the chief said, you can not, not do RVs and trailers at this point, enact the other changes, including the HOA stuff. Um, and see what kind of impact that has and then touch RVs and deal with. Housing issues later, um, and see if there's an impact. So that's an option as well that we could move forward quickly.
Let's uh, try to do this as efficient as possible. So we'll just go two through nine and. Um, just give your opinion on what you want to do regarding uh, the RVs and the work truck issue. So that we can provide them with a consensus on how to draft the ordinance. So we'll start with. Who's number two? Mayor Proton.
Um, I would say let's come back to that and do everything else. Come back to the work trucks and the RVs.
Yeah, I. I'd like to see them all together, but I I think um, you know, based off of this discussion, there's still some more uh. Conversation that needs to happen over RVs and work trucks. So let's uh, do those separate.
Thanks to you, Councilmember Ellen Thomas.
Um, yes, I would like to see it all together because I think this is a serious um, situation right now. And I do think the work truck needs to be addressed and limited to possibly no more than one and the definition of what a. Work truck is, um, cause especially in my ward in the core of city, core of the city, there is more than. Usually, you know, rec- several complaints. It's usually more than one vehicle that they consider a work truck. So I, I think it needs to be addressed altogether.
Uh, Chief Nichols, you, you had put three together that we need further discussion on. And and in a way, or further information, in a way, I think that's, that's kind of the case. We actually haven't talked about food trucks either. You know, some people who have a business as a food truck will park it at their home um. And leave it there. So those are, those can be large. Those can be semi. Semi-truck sized. Um. I would like it to include a big rig. The, the cab for a big rig. Because um, they are parked randomly around here. People leave their trailer somewhere and then bring, bring the um. The big vehicle to their home. Maybe they're long haulers. Come home for five days or something. I don't know what the situation is, but. I'd like to look at that too. And I do think that Mayor Huesman had a good idea about uh, commercial vehicles. As long as those fall into that category, but I think you could drive a food truck without a commercial vehicle. License, but maybe it's registered as a commercial vehicle. Is that it? Mayor Huesman?
Uh, there's rules that would go into weights and everything like that, and I'm not gonna provide a general uh, answer as to what you require as a CDO. And doesn't require a CDO. Even uh, you can have a truck that doesn't require one, but then you put a trailer behind it, it requires one. So I'm not going to provide a general on that. That was just my idea of how to get around what we allow. What we don't allow is if it requires a CDO for you to drive the vehicle, you can't park it in a residential neighborhood.
I appreciate your idea. Um, and then trailers. People leaving a trailer in front of their home that's unhitched. Or someone's home or on a street is an issue also. I didn't get very good direction.
I will figure it out and bring it back to you.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I'm with uh, Oscar and Nicole. I think uh, for right now, leave uh, the work trucks. RVs out and come back to that and move forward on the other stuff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll subscribe to that one as well. I I just think there's uh, plenty to be discussed about work trucks, the definition. Um, you, you know, and I don't think we even addressed if we talked about five or six people living in the house. Well, what if we all own our, own different business, you know? I know that doesn't happen frequently, but. If you have three different companies with three different work trucks and they all live in the same house, it's tough. So. Um, I think that's one we could have longer conversations about before we move forward. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I, I agree. We need to have longer conversation about the work truck RV situation, but I would say I think that it would be. Um, prudent to consider them separately because, you know, we're talking about a recreational vehicle versus a. A vehicle that is for someone to get to and from work. And so I think those need to be considered as separate um, types of vehicles.
And I would just kind of agree with everyone else. Move uh, forward with everything but the RVs and the work trucks.
Thank you all. Sounds like you have your direction, Chief. Anything else you need?
No, sir. Thank you. I appreciate the conversation.
Mr. Sheasley, anything else?
No, thank you. We'll get this probably on December seventh.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Hurst, your hand is still up. Did you have an additional comment? Great. Uh, we are done with presentations and time to move on reports. Are there any council members with reports to make?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor Huesman. I did have one other comment to ask.
Go ahead.
Um, we're not suggesting that we're not going to uh, have any restrictions on recreational vehicles. Is that correct?
No, ma'am. We want to get the uh, the things we can get knocked out first, the fine schedule, the things that are easier for us to get back to you. And my understanding is we're gonna take a look at all of the work trucks, RVs, trailers. Provide council with some definition of those and some further things to consider before we take action on them. So we will be coming back to you again.
Thank you very much. Just wanted that clarified.
Okay, now on to reports. Uh, Mr. Sheasley, your hand is up.
Just wanted to note, um, scheduled a policy and governance committee meeting for nine-thirty this Wednesday morning. I think I've cleared that with the committee members. I just wanted to make the rest of the council aware. And if any of the committee members have a problem with it, we will cancel it. Um, but I just wanted to let you know because that notice is coming out um, late tomorrow, so, or tomorrow morning rather, but late. So thank you.
Thank you. Any council members wishing to make a report? Councilmember Hurst.
Quick, we um, we had a Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refuge Board Meeting this week. A couple months ago, maybe. No, sorry. Work, COVID has really screwed my timing up, but um. The mayor signed and and a support letter for uh, the friends. Put forward an idea to ask the federal government as they were doing some um. Reappropriation of funds to do things such as the refuges around the country. We asked for consideration for five million dollars towards a Lake Mary Education Center that would focus on Native American. Uh, history in our area as well as some other educational opportunities for um. You know, outdoor opportunities for the children in the metro area. Um, that was not granted on the first round. So we will be having a second round discussion and and um, I, I'm just assuming that we will uh, move forward with the support from the council. Um, because we supported it the first round. I think we're sharpening our pencil a bit and trying to find. Um, you know, a way to better present this to those that are evaluating the uh, request. But all in all, I think um, the idea is honorable and and, you know. Hearing what the kind of, the bigger picture idea around this is, is something that I would like to continue to support and advocate for. And in doing so, um, there may be need, there may be a need for public outreach for support. And um, the friends kinda asked, the Friends of Front Range Wildlife Refuge kinda asked. If Commerce City does support it, if they may be able to um, do some public outreach using. The cities, you know, the, the cities avenues of public outreach. I don't know if we want to go that far. I, I, I'm not gonna fight for one way or the other, but if you guys. Need more information on that and want to look to support that, uh, please reach out to me. I, I think Megan could probably tell you very similar because she's also on that board. Um, but, you know, from my position, just one of us, uh, one of us nine, I would like to continue supporting that. So if, if. It comes back around, um, let's, let's have a discussion to see where we can go with that, please.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes, I'd like to um, encourage everyone to do what we can to get the information out about the. Uh, current CARES Act uh, grant programs that we have going on. There's three of them. Uh, we distributed postcards this week, including at Community Reach Center. As well as at Nativity Lutheran Church, there was a huge line on Saturday. Two hundred and fifty turkeys were given out, um, along with another sixty turkeys that were bought. At King Supers plus gift cards. There were so many people waiting in line and every single one of those people. Got one of the postcards that is, has, has either arrived in the mail. Or will be arriving in the mail about the programs that we're doing. And um, so. I do, uh, we can get a JPG if you wanted to put it into an email or some other thing. If you want to send it out to people you know. And, or your own church or whatever the case might be. Any, any help I think will matter. Because if that's anything that we've discovered, it's that communication and getting the word out is really critical and I. I, as law, as well as all of you, would love to see all of that money go out the door before the deadline. Um. Speaking of community reach, I wanted to let everyone know that um, I've. Got some interesting information this week, um, on Friday, that is. Uh, I was opposed to Seventy Second in Colorado, the tower strictly because it was a tower building. And I really didn't see how people were going to be interested in uh, working in towers in the same way that they did before. They're certainly having a problem downtown, for example, and in replacing people. As it turns out, it appears that the Community Reach Center is for sale. Um, that is a one point eight seven acre uh, property. Eleven thousand square foot building and the price is somewhere around a million dollars. So it's uh, comparing eighty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven square feet for a million dollars. Versus eleven thousand square feet for a million dollars. It looks like an ideal spot, by the way, for um. Uh, cultural center as well. Um, there appears to be a big warehouse in the back of it. Um, I know the Historical Society is looking for another place to be. It doesn't make sense for them to be. On an upper floor, but certainly on a main level, especially if it's just outside the light rail makes great sense. And um, any other programs like that. So I would hope that we can actually delve into this further. And entertain the idea because there are far more uses and um, of the property. Because of its scale and um, its price and what's available on the property. Tons of parking as well that would be ours alone.
Councilmember Smith.
So on Tuesday, we had our first Veterans Commission meeting and it was pretty exciting. And to have, to meet with all the guys and all the experience that they have. And the jobs that they have right now. It's gonna be a great resource for our veterans and um, it's really cool to have that up and running now.
Thank you. Any other council members wishing to make a report? Seeing none, uh, had three meetings last week. One was a meeting with elected officials and representatives of CDPHE and the governor's staff. To discuss the COVID dial and the new restrictions that went into place on Friday. Second meeting was uh, with Metro Mayor Caucus where the, much of the conversation was repeated as well as some other items. And the third meeting was with a gentleman named Stephen Jacobson, who was interested in developing around the commuter rail station. And uh, purchasing that property from the fries and turning that into um, a whole mixed use uh, development. So look for more information on that project to be coming and hopefully we can turn that into something that really does redefine the areas. We all have. That vision to do so. That is all I have. Um, wanna say uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I know that uh, the restrictions that are out there are going to make it a little bit more difficult than normal to celebrate. Uh, what is uh, my personal favorite holiday of the year. Um, but I just hope that everybody finds something to be thankful for. And uh, has good blessings as we continue to trudge through this uh, thing we call COVID. So uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody in Commerce City. Thank you, everybody on council. Thank you, everybody on staff. Wish you guys a happy holiday as well and we'll see you next week with the joint meeting between us and the school board. And have a good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.